If I could have your attention for one minute, we're delayed here a little bit. The attorneys are working something out back there, so they're gonna give us the go-ahead when it's done. I don't know what the issue is.
Mike?
Now, it's all right.
Don't worry, I was on top. I know how to get documents up.
So my suggestion.
Again.
This would be a TV.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
We have had.
Okay, call the, maybe, one, two, three.
Yeah.
Okay, for sure to the Urban Public Meeting Act, the South Jersey Times and the Sentinel were notified of this meeting, and it was also posted on the township website. Desiree, you can do the roll call?
Yes, sorry. Mr. Glazier?
Here.
Mr. Leo?
Here.
Mr. Garfalo?
Here.
Mr. DeCesar?
Here.
Mr. Ketchum?
Here.
Mr. Hamel?
Here.
And Chairman Gremer?
Here. Okay, in the absence of Mr. Guyton, we'll seat our alternate Andy Hamel. All right, minutes of the previous meeting, gentlemen.
I make my summary, approve.
Approve by Dan, the second by Mr. Garfalo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
None.
None, okay. Mike, do we wanna address the public?
On the first application, so the public understands why we were delayed for 15 minutes on this initial application, which is a Hyblend LLC, which I believe most of you are here for. There's a requirement for public notice on these applications. The public notice is what we call jurisdictional, meaning that if public notice isn't given properly, then the application can't be heard because the board has no jurisdiction. So we had a lot of property owners that were noticed. One of the addresses, it was a, it was drive, whatever drive, and the applicant put avenue. Believe it or not, that's what this is all about, drive versus avenue. Because of that, the notice was not delivered to that individual. So that would've been a beginning and end of it. We would not have been able to have the hearing tonight. However, that individual is here tonight, but he didn't get the full notice he should've gotten. So it was really up to him. He could've not had the hearing tonight if he chose not to. However, he's indicated that he would like us to begin the hearing, but not necessarily to conclude and have a vote tonight because he wants to have the opportunity to present his side of it or his position on it after having a chance to look at the material that he didn't look at as of yet. He didn't find out until 5:00 today. So in order not to have everybody have to come back for sure, we're gonna have the hearing tonight as far as we can get, up to whatever time the chairman decides, at 10:00 or 11:00 o'clock, most likely, and then we will continue with the following motion.
Okay, first on our agenda tonight, and the only thing on our agenda tonight is ZB 2301, the name Hyblend LLC.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Louis Magazou, and I represent the applicant. I see that we have a pretty crowded room this evening, and we also have a number of individuals who are gonna be testifying on our behalf. So I'm going to do something lawyers don't typically do, and I'm not gonna talk a lot. I'm gonna be very brief, and I'm gonna reserve my comments for summation whenever this ends. However, I just will indicate that our application is for a license to grow cannabis and manufacture products containing cannabis. Recreational use licenses allow for many uses, but in this situation, we're talking about adult use. There's some issue as to the zone, and we're requesting a devariance to show that special reasons exist because the applicant will suffer undue hardship if compelled to use the property in conformity with permitted uses in the zone. As you know, and we will be demonstrating through our expert, the undue hardship for a devariance involves showing that the property cannot reasonably be adapted to a conforming use. The situation mainly exists in two scenarios, where an area is owned exclusively for outdated uses, second, when a split zone exists, such as that half the lot, the front half is a commercial zone, and the back half is a residential zone. The lot, which is a subject matter of this application, is in such a split zone. We also, in our application, requested any waivers and variances. What I would like to do is first bring the property owner to be sworn, and I don't know what your protocol is. Do you swear everybody at one time, or do you swear them as they come?
We swear anyone that you're gonna testify at one time.
Yep, okay.
Paul, and where's Chris? Where's Chris? Come on up. Can I get sworn up here, please? I'll get out of the way. You all have to be sworn in. Just raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell truth about the testimony you're gonna give to the CEO?
I do.
Start from you. Just state your name and add us for the record.
Sure. James Kyle, K-Y-L-E, and it's 2 East Broad Street, Hopewell, New Jersey.
And your?
Planner.
Credentials.
Christopher Prevetera, 1654 Catawba Ave., owner.
Matt Randall, 54 Madison Street in Paquonix, New Jersey. I am the CEO of Hyblend.
You're the what?
The CEO of Hyblend, in order.
Jesse McDonald, 20 Daniel Street, Hopeville, Mass., 01747, and I'm the smell mitigator for this meeting.
Is there an engineer, is there an engineer, Mr. Magazou?
We've got the planner. Mr. Kyle is here. And the submission, we believe, speaks for itself with respect to the design of the plan. We do have the planner to speak to the planning issues.
So the board will acknowledge that the professionals are professionals in their field.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think we have one person's gonna pass.
We do. We actually have, we're gonna have somebody remotely. We've already had worked this out with the Secretary to the Board. We're gonna have someone come and speak to the security issues. We know that this is a little bit unusual for zoning boards. However, we believe, and I've done this a number of times, that there will be concerns raised by the public as to questions of odor mitigation and as to security. So we have one expert in a video as to odor, and we have another expert who will be calling in as to security, and also has a presentation.
First thing that we need to do is, would you want to say something?
I just wanna make sure the board understands, basically, what we have is what's called a bifurcated application. So there's a request for a use variance, but not a request for the site plan tonight. So in a bifurcated application, if the use variance is granted, then they would come back at a later time for the site plan.
You're gonna bring the engineer at that time.
So we're not going to be dealing with the site details. We're gonna be dealing with enough site details for you to make a decision, but not all of the engineering details that would be involved with the site plan. We should also spare in Mr. Shidley. This is his first meeting this year.
Raise your right hand, Mr. Shidley. Be sure to tell the two that's passing up together. Your name and address and your credentials.
David Shidley. I'm a partner with the firm Schaefer-Nassar-Shidley Consulting Engineers. Office is in Maze Landing, New Jersey. I'm a New Jersey licensed engineer, and a New Jersey licensed professional planner. Represent several municipalities in southern New Jersey, closest being Beunivis Township. I've been there for about 29 years. Estelle Manor, Corbin City, Ocean City, Pleasantville, several other municipalities. Good to be aboard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think the first thing we need to do is deem this application complete, and our engineer has provided us with all the information, then they're all complete, correct? They fulfilled all the?
That's correct. We did a letter dated April 19th, 2023, and in paragraph two, we talked about completeness. We've gone down all the checklist items. The only thing I had a question on was checklist item number seven. Notice to property owners, we hear this evening that it's been addressed. So in my recommendation, my recommendation to the board is that we grant the application complete, and we're here at the C E O.
Is there a motion to grant the application?
I make that motion by Dan DeCesar.
Second?
Second, Mike Garfalo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Mr. Magazou, you have the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up on your ABLE engineers' report, I do wanna indicate for the record that his letter of April 19th, 2023 relied upon the following documents that we would submit to the extent as required in the record. A topographical survey is provided by Taylor, Weisman &amp; Taylor, signed by Samuel Prevetera, PLS, dated November 10th, 2022. A letter of intent from Hyblend LLC and Christopher Prevetera, site photographs, and a concept plan as prepared by KMA, James Kyle, P P, dated April 6th, 2023. First, for very brief testimony, I'm going to ask the property owner, come, Mr. Prevetera, just to establish the first part of the record. Okay, so just, it's gonna be very brief. Just indicate to the board your name and the address of the property in question.
Sure. Christopher Prevetera, 1654 Catawba Ave., New Field, New Jersey, 08344.
And Mr. Prevetera, when did you first start considering selling this property?
I would say, I would say about a year, about a year ago.
And did you have discussions, well, did you have discussions with, obviously had discussions with my client, but you did have discussions with other individuals about purchasing the property?
Yes, I did. I was approached regarding solar, and I'm not sure if anyone's familiar with how the state is, but that, I had several solar developers that were in discussions with me, and then there was something that prevented that from ground mount. Ground mount is not able to be done with community solar in state New Jersey. It's only roof and agrivolt take, but I don't think they allow that either. So that, when that fell through, I actually had a connection who had discussed this opportunity with me, and I went to the Cannabis Commission's website and pursued it from there.
And did you talk to more than one individual about possibly having cultivation of cannabis on your site?
Yes, yeah.
And just roughly, about how many folks did you speak with?
I contacted every applicant on the site. So I would say, I mean, we're talking 80 or more.
And how many showed interest?
Probably about 10, and a little bit down to three, four, like three to five.
And were you able to enter into any transactions to close a deal with anyone other than my client?
No.
Okay. And do you believe, based on, and I know you're not an expert, but based on the experience that you've had, that this is, in fact, an appropriate use for the property?
I do, yes.
And just to be clear, the solar use would be precluded by state law, so that's just not a?
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any further questions. I was just developing that foundation. I don't know if counsel has any qualms.
Can I ask you just a quick question?
Sure.
For the record, for the record, my name is Dante Berenti. I'm an attorney with Hoffman de Museo. I represent Brian and Captain Dottie Carzman. Mr. Prevetera, just a quick question. There's a single-family home on your property?
That's correct.
How, how old's that house, approximately?
95 years old, maybe.
Okay, so someone, it's been used as a residence for 95 years?
Yes.
Any reason it can't continue to be used as a residence in the future?
Besides the decision I make, I would say no.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Do you know your neighbors?
Not personally, no. I've had, I met the people to the right on the nursery briefly. Never spoken to anyone, I know people across the street, Brian DeVita, a couple other people.
Mr. Prevetera?
Yeah.
Did you speak a little louder?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. First time doing this. Is that loud enough?
Yeah, just speaking to the mic.
Okay.
So I don't want to hear you in the audience.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. I'm counsel for Paul and Diane. We're in here tonight. Just had a couple of quick questions, if I may.
Sure.
Did you, how long have you owned the property?
I have owned it for, what's the date? Over, I'd say, a year, 15 months, 15 months.
And what was the reason you purchased the property?
Originally, it was to renovate, and I was going to use the land, possibly bought it as an investment that I knew that there was something to do with the land. I didn't wanna purchase, if I may, I did not wanna purchase all of it. I originally tried to purchase three total acres. The original owners did not want to do that, so they said it's all or nothing, and that's, that's what I did.
What was the sole purpose of your investment?
Originally, it was for my personal use.
Investment as in making money into the future?
Oh, and then the land was to possibly use it for whatever I could, commercial or sale or anything to that sort, more of an investment.
Was your intent to make more money than when you purchased the property?
Yes.
What did you purchase the property for? How much did you?
Total, $400,000.
$400,000. What are you selling the property for?
Is that, am I allowed to say that? Because we...
First time doing this. Is that loud enough?
Yeah, just speak into the mic.
Okay.
So I don't want to hear you in the audience.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. I'm counsel for Paul and Diane Lovey in here tonight. Just had a couple of quick questions, if I may.
Sure.
Did you, how long have you owned the property?
I have owned it for, what's the date? Over, I'd say a year, 15 months, 15 months.
And what was the reason you purchased the property?
Originally, it was to renovate. And I was going to use the land, possibly bought it as an investment that I knew that there was something to do with the land. I didn't want to purchase, if I may. I did not want to purchase all of it. I originally tried to purchase three total acres. The original owners did not want to do that. So they said it's all or nothing, and that's what I did.
What was the sole purpose of your investment?
Originally, it was for my personal use.
Okay. Investment as in making money into the future?
Oh, and then the land was to possibly use it for whatever I could. Commercial or sale or anything to that sort, more of an investment.
Was your intent to make more money than when you purchased the property?
Yes.
What did you purchase the property for? How much did you?
The total, $400,000.
$400,000. And what are you selling the property for?
Is that, am I allowed to say? Because we, we got.
I'm not sure if that's relevant. I'm not an attorney, but.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's a relevant question.
We redact.
It's relevant because the testimony was he purchased the property for $400,000 and he wanted to make an investment on it. He wanted to make more money. I then asked him what he sold it for.
It's more than $400,000, I can say that.
Did you go to any one of the neighbors here and ask if they wanted to sell, wanted to buy your property?
I did not.
Okay. Do you have an understanding that there's several in here that would purchase the property for what you sold to them?
I do not. In all seriousness, how would I know that?
Okay. What are the reasons you didn't go to your neighbors?
Because I did not want to sell it for that personal reasons to anyone else. I had, what I had an idea of. And I've researched this, and this is what I feel is the best use for myself and for the land.
Are you getting some money from the Hyblend LLC?
Yeah, I don't think that's relevant.
In the future.
In the profit as. Oh, no. This is just a straight sale.
So the only point that you wanted to sell to cannabis was your personal belief that it should be on that property? Is that what you're saying?
No, not personal belief. That's just what came up at the time. If it was solar, if solar could have worked out, it would have been solar.
How about just a neighbor to put another house for their daughter?
No one approached me. And I did not think to approach anyone else because this fell into my lap. And I was researching this on my own, and I had to do what I had to do.
How much time did you spend calling all these cannabis places you mentioned? Over 10, 15?
It took a week or two.
Okay. How long would it take on to your neighbor to ask if they wanted to buy the property?
I don't see that as being relevant.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't.
I don't have any further questions.
We'll give the counsel's name for the record.
Sir, what's your name?
My name is Attorney Jeffrey Downs from J. Downs Law, Mobile, New Jersey.
I don't have any further questions. We'll call them. Thank you. I'm going to call my client up. Matt, would you come up, please? Just identify yourself for the board, your name and address, and then I'll ask you some questions.
Absolutely. I'm Matt Randall. Address again is 54 Madison Street in Paquannick, New Jersey. I am the CEO of Hyblend.
Now, what, could you give the board a little benefit of your educational background and what you do for employment?
Absolutely. So I graduated from Berry University. It's a private Catholic university in Miami Shores, Florida, with a degree in marketing and a minor in science. And currently, I lead some of the largest pharmaceutical promotional material. So TV commercials, print materials, to launch a lot of their different drugs and products.
Now, in that, in that position of responsibility, what is, you know, what is your total responsibility? And what's your charge vis-à-vis the company and the public? Give a little more in detail, please.
Yeah, so I'm directly in charge of all the marketing material for this large pharmaceutical company in North America for all of their brand launches. And I have a direct report of several employers underneath me. And I manage the largest clients that we have out of our New York office.
Does it require you to do analysis of the medical?
Yes.
Describe that a little bit more.
It does, yeah. So anytime that we go through marketing material, we have to go through the FDA approval and all of the very strict guidelines that they go with and how it's marketed out to not only doctors and patients, but also, you know, any of the Salesforce team that goes out and that sells these products. And we deal directly with that, the PDUFA dates. We just got approval on another drug that, you know, got approved on the 28th. So directly liaisoning with all of that information and the strict guidelines that the United States put forth with the FDA.
In that capacity, do you have reason to review regulations related to pharmaceuticals?
I do, yeah.
And what do you do in that review?
So in that review, it's a medical regulatory review that we go through with the pharmaceutical company. They have their medical reviewers. They go through all the product specifics, anything that's going out through messaging, anything that's going out through, again, just any touch point that goes out with those products and making sure that those are compliant.
And in that context, do you have responsibility to review or synthesize pharmaceutical standard operating procedures?
I do not, no.
Okay. So talk a little bit about this parcel, how you found it, and also your interest in cultivating and manufacturing cannabis.
Absolutely. So touching on the identification of the property, I've actually contacted 15 townships in the state of New Jersey. I've done all of the research on my own for this. I'm a very diligent individual. So I've been in constant contact with a lot of the zoning boards and regulators for all of these respective townships. And then through my website, I had the property owner reach out to me, and we had several conversations about the use case of the property, what he was looking to do with that. And then we got into agreement because the property is specifically located because of the fact that from the actual street front of it, it's pretty much completely not visible if we were to put a building there, which is one of the big things is because myself, as a father of a daughter, it's important to make sure that even though the operations, you know, are going through, it's something that we can, you know, make sure that we can kind of hide it as well to make sure that it's not really affecting the surrounding property, the fact of the foliage.
Mr. Chairman, I really don't want to have to. I don't want to, I don't want to have to fight the whole neighborhood, Mr. Chairman.
You have your chance to speak.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, we can actually.
Okay, stop. Don't, you don't engage. So let's just talk about the due diligence you did. And specifically as to, well, first of all, describe the project, the specificity, the square feet, what your anticipation is. And I'm going to get, I'm going to get the board here, which will ultimately be responding. So describe, describe the project, if you would.
Yeah, absolutely. So we'd be looking to do cultivation and manufacturing in this particular property. The actual property that we're proposing now, or the build we're proposing now, is a 20,000 square foot building. It is going to be built from ground up to make sure that we are following all of the CRC guidelines.
What CRC for the audience?
That is the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. That's, it is the governing body for the state of New Jersey for cannabis specifically. We are also going to have a 3,500 square foot admin building that's going to be attached to that, along with a generator building to help suppress the sound decibels that will be released from the operation of the building.
And you're applying for a certain type of license that I believe is called a micro license. Could you describe what the parameters are and limitations are to that license?
So yes, as of now, we are conditionally approved for a micro license through the CRC. That is limiting the canopy space to 2,500 square feet. And that's the same thing with the manufacturing aspect of it as well. So canopy space is what is indeed flower, which is what creates the smell. Any plant before that, so vegetation process, you don't actually smell that. That's just a typical plant. All of the odor comes when it actually gets its flower.
Now, just to be clear, that's the, now, how does the cultivation integrate with the manufacturing request?
So think of the manufacturing aspect of it as almost processing. So once we cultivate, we go through the drying process, the curing drying process of the plant itself. That will be brought over into the manufacturing aspect. We'll turn it into additional ways of consuming the product. That could be through edibles. That could be through oils. That could be through tinctures. That could be things of that sort.
Now, what other restrictions specifically as to employees does the micro license provide?
So at this point, it limits it to 10 employees per license. So manufacturing would be 10, cultivation would be 10. You're not allowed to go above and beyond that.
Now, given those parameters, could you tell the board what your sense is as to how many vehicles will be present on a daily basis? Also, if you would, talk about the hours of operation.
Yes. So vehicles are going to be pedestrian vehicles on a daily basis. That is just the individuals that'll be working on the property. And obviously, security, which should be part of that group of individuals. Delivery trucks are going to be in box trucks. There is no 18-wheelers or any truck that is larger than that. They will be in and out of the property about a bi-weekly basis, depending upon the need for the product. And then there is Sprinter vans as well that will work and function as the distribution aspect to bring it to the respective dispensaries.
So let's, I want to be clear on this. How many, how many box trucks do you think would be coming in a month?
In a month, probably about two to three.
And, and that's limited, that's as a result of the limitations that are imposed upon you by the CRC? Is that correct in terms of canopy?
Yes and no. It also depends on the size, right? So I mean, it's limited with the 2,500 square feet. But I mean, if we're building a 200,000 square foot building, then delivery is going to be a little bit more frequent.
But you're not. But as to what you're building, that's how you identify the vehicles. And what about the, you mentioned Sprinter vans? How many Sprinter vans would anticipate would be going in and out?
So on initial operation, we're looking at about one Sprinter van that would be going in and out of the property. And that traffic is no more than just a pedestrian traffic car that comes through. They'll be doing deliveries after we do the harvest and go through the manufacturing process. So that tends to be a little bit more frequent as we go through the harvest.
And the hours as to manufacturing cultivation would be the same?
Yes, it will be. Nine to five is what we're looking for, about 30 minutes before open. We'll have people on site for the typical employee, and then we'll have 30 minutes as well for closing.
What, what research have you done as to odor mitigation? I know that we're going to have some testimony on it, but I'd like to have you share with the board, based on your experience, what research you did on odor mitigation and why you chose the company that you're choosing for odor?
So just to make sure it's correct in regards of the product that we chose, not specifically the company.
That's correct.
But so I'm not an expert by any means in odor mitigation, but I do know a little bit in regards of my current role and, you know, just making sure that we have a really just pharmaceutical aspect grade facility. Odor mitigation, believe it or not, the technology that we have out there, we're able to reduce that, prevent it 99.9% through odor mitigation with the technology that we use through all the air scrubbing, the carbon filtration that's through the facility.
And we're going to show that video in a little bit. But if you would, share with the board and the audience the amount of due diligence you did to identify this particular type of equipment for odor mitigation.
Quite a bit. I mean, it's one of the biggest concerns that I've seen, not only in New Jersey, but obviously, you know, everyone's well aware of it throughout the state, or throughout the country, I'm sorry. And it's one of the big things that has kind of come up across multiple states as, you know, this continues to ramp up as a product that the US is adapting. I've done several research, multiple researches in regards with different companies and the failures that they had and why odor has leaked out. And then the successes that other companies have had and why they haven't had any odor come out.
And did your due diligence include doing background checks or inquiring about the equipment that you proposed to use?
It did, yeah. So I've actually met the individual for, that created this company and this equipment personally. And just really understanding how he is able to break down the aspect and provide the security and comfortability that there will be no odor based upon the equipment that we use. This is, you know, why we've chose to go this direction.
Now, with respect to security, talk about the research you did also to identify a security company and what, and we're going to see a video on that also, but what you, what requirements you established for the security company?
Yeah, so the requirements are based around the CRC, but then also going above and beyond that. So it's not only just to protect the surrounding community, but it's also to go above and beyond that, to continue to put in several different ways of mitigating issues that might come about, to continue to not only make, you know, more importantly, the community safe around us, but also, you know, the facility and everything else that surrounds that.
Now, as to the parcel itself, there was reference already, Mr. Parenti, I think, mentioned about the home that is there. Could you tell the board, in the event that we are granted the variances and the other relief that's requested, what your plans would be for the house and what requirements you'd be prepared to, to be bound to, to this board?
Absolutely, yeah. So from what I saw of this property, my initial thought with the particular dwelling that's in the front is that dwelling will be situated for an individual that works for the company. There wouldn't be any other use outside of that. And I am happy to put that in writing. I'm happy to swear that in. That would be the full intent. That is also another security mitigation as well, because we'll always have somebody that is responsible for the property, for the facility, always on site, above and beyond the security.
And to be clear, I want to use the nomenclature that the board and counsel are familiar with. You'd be prepared to make it a condition of any resolution authorizing this use?
100%.
Okay. And that, you know that would run with the property and run with the approval?
100%.
Okay. Now, just for the record, and I apologize to the audience that this is larger, but I want to introduce this, I kept it in plastic because of the rain. And I want to introduce this as, to make sure that, and then obviously, Mr. Kyle's going to speak to it. But. So this is a, I had it blow up. This is a concept plan dated April 6, 2023, block 15, lot 8, 1654 Catawba Ave. Is this a fair and accurate representation of what your plan is?
It is, yes, at this point, absolutely.
Okay. And I don't know, do you mark it as A or P or S? A1? So I would ask at this.
And it's the same as we've received?
Yes, the same exact one.
Just bigger.
Yeah, okay, fine. And just for the record, Mr. Shidley asked me, but for the record, this is exactly the same as the paper version that was submitted with the application. You indicated that you, in your due diligence, that you did inquiry on multiple communities throughout the state. Why did you choose Franklin Tatchett?
So the property size was pretty enticing in regards with, really, again, just touching on the same point of how it's situated. It's pretty much encased by foliage. We obviously, you know, will continue to understand any additional buffering that needs to be added as well. And that's an easy thing because it fits very well within the existing environment. And then outside of just, you know, the additional properties that I continue to look at, the additional townships, this is definitely more, more south away from a lot of the commotion that happens in more northern Jersey, which is more susceptible to individuals coming in and possibly, you know, making any issues. So being the fact there's a little bit more rural is a little bit away from additional, you know, threats, if you will.
All right. What I would like to do now is to get to the video for the odor mitigation. Okay? If we can do that. Now, just for the record, this is a video of the product that you intend to utilize upon approval?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Just, I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So you want to build a 20,000 square feet of a building?
Correct.
You're going to use 5,000 square feet. What's the other 15,000 square feet?
Absolutely. So with, so the process in regards with canopy space for 2,500 square feet, that's only for the flower aspect of it. So you also have the vegetation, so you need additional room for that. You also need additional room for curing. It's a separate room. It's temperature controlled, humidity controlled. You also need a separate room for anything to do with, and Jesse can speak this as well, but the actual room itself, the 20,000 square foot, is going to have multiple rooms that are part of the actual process for cultivation of cannabis and manufacturing as well, correct?
And the odor mitigation is regulated by the CRC, the cannabis?
It is, yes.
So they tell you what you need for filtering that odor?
So they say that you can't have any odor detectable outside of the facility. And then it's really just up to the technology that you bring in and obviously them making, you know, them verifying that when we get proof for operation.
I mean, there's several communities that have been complaining of those odies and the odor.[1692.31] the odor.
Absolutely.
But they're complaining that there is strong odor with all that...
Absolutely. Yeah, if I may, I can...
Sure, please.
So some of those issues, and I don't know all of these specific buildings, but just due from my, my research, some of these buildings that actually allow odor to escape, obviously it's not their intent, but they allow odor to escape is because they're retrofitting buildings that aren't built for this particular type of operation. The benefit that we have with this proposed building is it's going to be built from scrap, from ground up, and it will be built to make sure that there is no odor that is going to be able to escape because that retrofitting buildings, you have a lot of, you know, different holes, you have ceiling that's not, that's not up to, you know, it's not up to date, and that allows the odor to escape.
And what, if it does escape, who forces that? Because there's nobody listening down there.
So if I, if I can, I can speak on, and we'll mention this as well in the video for odor aspect of it, but we would propose, so the technology that we're proposing is not only going to, you know, guarantee ninety-nine point nine percent, it also has the technology that you'll be able to give to yourself, to the board, or to the township, where you'll be able to consistently monitor the equipment, any of the downfalls that happen on that equipment, you'll be notified of that immediately. You'll have a direct communication to somebody that's at the facility, a direct communication to the company that'll be on, on staff to come out and to mitigate that immediately if we're not able to mitigate it immediately on the property.
Just to be clear, we're all familiar with dashboards, okay? At least some of us are familiar with dashboards, where there's the capacity to see in real time what's going on. What, what my client is suggesting to do is to literally make one of those dashboards available at a site that would be determined by the, by the town, so that in real time they can monitor these things, so that there's no surprise. If somebody calls and says, I think there's an odor problem, well, this is what the data shows, whether it be the police department, wherever else at the town will identify. You can't control it, you can't change the control, but the town would be, correct if I'm wrong, would be able to monitor in real time all of those questions.
That's nice, but I don't think we have the personnel to do something.
Well, I, I would think that if there's, the police department, is there not? Once again, I'm happy to argue with everybody, but I would rather do one at a time. If, if the town, if the town would decide...
So if I...
If the town is not interested in that, certainly that's, we understand that, but we'd make it available. It also could actually be on a smartphone, it doesn't have to be at a, well...
It is, yeah. It's absolutely, it's available on a smartphone as well, and, and just you'll have full, you'll have full access to that, that technology, and again, it's in real time. So it's just really dependent upon as we continue to, you know, progress in understanding, you know, with the respect, you know, with the township and how they would like to really access that technology.
Literally, your zoning officer, governing body, anybody who has a smartphone would be able to monitor in real time. If the town doesn't want it, that's fine, but it's something that we're offering to show transparency.
All right, we'll move on with your video then.
Okay.
What's going to be your percentage of the manufacture for medical use or for recreational use? Do you have any idea what your percentage is?
So we only have a recreational license, so we would never be able to actually manufacture medical unless, unless we go through that.
Recreational use?
I'm sorry, can you repeat your question? I didn't hear it.
Hundred percent is going for recreational use?
Adult recreational use, correct.
Just as a reminder to the board, the town has passed an ordinance, maybe, maybe folks here don't know this, and maybe I should have laid that out, and we'll do that through the planner. The town has passed an ordinance which allows cannabis cultivation within the four corners of the town. That was decided by the governing body.
Where were you?
Well, I'm not sure that, I wanted to make it part of the record.
And you live in Vineland, as you know, we have the police department.
Yes.
Close your eyes, let me calm down.
No, I understand.
Okay.
All right, so can we see the video now?
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just told you, in the application, that there's a generator that's going to be the primary source of energy?
Correct.
Can I ask about the block?
So why do we need a generator? Because the type of technology that we would bring in in regards of just the power consumption that we needed, we would need a generator to help supplement that energy need.
Twenty-four seven? That would be wrong.
So twenty-four seven, but that would obviously fall within the decibel ratings, not only for the state but for the township as well.
Is that going to be two more levels, natural gas?
So it'd be natural gas is what we're planning to do, absolutely.
About the cooling system?
The cooling system is through HVAC.
Are we ready for the video? Any other questions, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Just give me one second, because I have to...
So what, what I would like to do is to, while he's working on that, evidently it thinks there's two computers on, but have Mr. Kyle speak to the planning implications of this. It's a little bit not the way I had planned, but I don't want to waste people's time, so we'll continue with, with your permission, Mr. Chairman.
It's fine, yeah.
Mr. Kyle?
It's fine, as long as we get the chance to...
Of course, of course.
I'm not actually done yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm just trying to move it along. I know that Mr. Kyle is, is known to this board, and I believe, Mr. Chairman, you've already qualified him, but I think for the benefit of the audience and the record, I'd like him to just give a little bit of his background, not necessarily the whole recitation. If you would, please identify yourself and about your educational, professional background, a number of times you've, you've testified.
Sure. So again, James Kyle with Kyle McManus Associates in Hopewell, New Jersey. I have a Bachelor of Science in Environmental Planning and Design from Rutgers, which I received in nineteen ninety-six. I've been a practicing planner for about twenty-five years. Our office currently represents about twenty-four municipalities as their consulting planner. I've been qualified as an expert by over two-hundred-and-forty boards in the state, including many appearances before this board, the Riggins, and I think done a couple Dollar Generals in town as well. I'm licensed as a professional planner by the state of New Jersey, and I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners.
All right. And how many times have you testified? I don't know, did I miss that?
How many boards?
Yes.
Over two-hundred-and-forty.
Okay. So in preparation for your testimony today or this evening, would you please share with the board, any audience, the preparation that you did to come to your report?
Sure. So I've met with the client council a number of times, we've discussed the operations of the facility, what the facility would be composed of, that all went on to this concept plan. Initially, we had submitted a different concept plan through Mr. Shadig's review. After we got the survey, his request was that we put a scaled concept plan on the survey, which we did. And just so the boards are aware, I probably prepare five plans like this every week. So I'm familiar with site plan standards, parking space sizes, aisles, loadings, you know, things like that. So just to briefly go into the, the site design, so the anticipation here is that, you know, there's a wooded area at the front of the site, I'll say on the front quarter of the site, that, that's some, it's medium density, mostly deciduous vegetation. The goal is to leave as much of that intact, removing only what we would need to get a driveway back to the facility. And as Matt had said, really, the goal here was to position this in the best way on the site so that we can buffer it utilizing the existing vegetation, but then provide opportunity around the perimeters to provide additional buffering. So this will be a single-story building, both the administration building, which is thirty-five-hundred square feet, that would be for office functions, other administrative aspects of the operation, and then the twenty thousand square foot portion, which would be the cultivation and manufacturing facility. So again, kind of a low-slung, single-story building that would be out there. All the loading will be along the east side, as currently anticipated, and as Matt had said, you know, the, the in and out of trucks to this facility is fairly limited. You know, we're, we're not having tractor-trailers that need to visit this site. Most of the operations can be conducted with box trucks and Sprinter vans, so the frequency of those is pretty low. You know, and it's really occurring, as Matt had said, once the harvest occurs and manufacturing is complete, that's when product would be shipped out to other dispensaries, you know, in the region. So that, you know, is really going to be occurring on a cycle of, I think it's every ninety days roughly, so it's, it's really every, every quarter that there's actually product that will be shipped out, so it's not a constant flow on a daily basis. The loading we put on the east side of the building, you know, we don't need loading docks for tractor-trailers, so it's a fairly limited loading area. Box trucks can either back up, or there could be a drive-through door. A lot of operators prefer to have those vehicles be able to drive right into the facility for loading for security purposes, so that, that's a possibility if we were to get to the site plan phase. The generator building initially, that was anticipated to be a little larger, so what we want to do is enclose this generator within a structure so that we can provide sound attenuation, to make sure that we can meet all the noise standards of both the township and the state. And that building is located... That building in particular, wow, this is small, I can't read that, one hundred and forty-four feet from the property line, so from the east property line, it's about one hundred and forty-four feet to that building. But again, the purpose of that is just to enclose that unit so that we can attenuate the sound successfully. The other components here for emergency service purposes, we did provide a turnaround. We may get to the site plan phase and in conjunction with emergency services determine that's not necessary, but generally, they want to be able to take an emergency vehicle on at least two sides of the building to have access for fire and emergency purposes. We're also showing a dumpster enclosure out near the generator building, and you'll also see there are two eight-by-twelve pads for the HVAC units. So while the odor mitigation occurs indoors with the carbon filtration, the HVAC units are needed for humidity control and temperature control, so those are mounted on the ground outside and then ductwork run into the facility. So we showed that location. We showed a parking area for forty cars. By the time we get to site plan phase, we may not need that many, so that could be reduced. And then we did provide a separate drive aisle for, for box trucks and vans to circulate separately over to the side of the building and not have to go through the parking field. Conceptually, we're showing areas for, for stormwater basins, so we will need to meet, if we get to the site plan phase, we will need to meet all of New Jersey's stormwater management requirements and those of the township. Obviously, we haven't done any of the testing to support that. The goal of this bifurcated application is just to get approval for the use, and then we would return to the board in the future with a fully engineered site plan. So this is just our current idea of, of what the facility could be laid out like with parking. And as to buffering, we showed conceptually, so if you've been out to the property, looked at an aerial photograph, you know there are also some hedgerows along the perimeter of the property, those are largely deciduous, not very dense, so we have the ability, as you can see, there's plenty of room on the site to provide additional buffering, we can install evergreens, we might be able to engage in some reforestation in some of those buffer areas to provide a more natural approach here. We could also potentially use berm, so if the site were developed and as we strip soil, we can maybe use those to create some landscape berms in, in some of the areas on the east side as well as the west. So just reviewing quickly the bulk regulations for the residential agricultural district, we do meet all of the requirements of the zone. The only exception is the existing house. So the front yard required is seventy-five feet, the existing dwelling that is on Catawba Avenue is about fifty-four feet, but that's, that's a legally existing non-conforming condition of the property. The other component of the use, and so there are really two use variances that, that we're talking about here. One identified by Mr. Shadig in his review is the fact that we have two uses on the property. We have a single-family home that's at the front, and then there's a cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facility proposed at the rear. Now, the applicant's intent is that the single-family dwelling that is there is going to be used for someone that's employed with the business, and there's an advantage there in that it, it gives a presence on the site twenty-four seven. If there's an issue, there's somebody on site that works for the business that can address, you know, any potential problems that may arise. It raises an interesting question that if the single-family dwelling is used only for housing of employees, so think of something like farm labor, would that require a use variance? Because it's now not necessarily a single-family home, it's accommodations for someone that's, you know, working with the business. But either way, that was one variance that Mr. Shadig had identified, that if the board feels is necessary, we, we will seek. The other component is the cannabis cultivation and manufacturing. Now, this is a bit of a unique situation. So the township committee with an ordinance that they adopted in two thousand twenty-one, and this was at the time when all communities in New Jersey had to either opt in or opt out of cannabis. So the guidelines from the state act said that each municipality had until, I believe it was August twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-one, to decide whether or not they wanted to permit these facilities within their borders or not. What Franklin Township did was adopt an ordinance that prohibited only two of the six classes of cannabis facilities under the state act, and those were classes five and six. So class five is a retail cannabis outlet. Class six is the office or base of operations for a delivery service. Some municipalities were not allowed to restrict the delivery within their borders, but they could choose to not have the operations for that delivery service be within their borders. So there was no specific prohibition in that ordinance adopted by the township committee on classes one through four. What is being proposed here are classes one and two. So class one is a cultivation license, class two is a manufacturing license. So it poses an interesting question. While they did not specifically permit cannabis classes one through four in the districts within the township, that they, they did not prohibit them. Again, I, I don't know what the committee's intent was with that. I know that my client had conversations with Rosemary before she retired, and, you know, but we're not going to really talk about that, she's not here, so it's not really relevant. But the interpretation by the board's engineer and planners that a use variance is necessary, so that's what we've applied for. And what I'll do is provide, again, there, there's no bulk relief that's required other than the existing non-conforming condition for the single-family dwelling. Everything else complies, but typically, if there was bulk relief here, we would delay that to the site plan phase because we, you know, the, the design could change slightly as we engineer the site and things like that. So aside from meeting with the client council to discuss the application, I've also reviewed the township zoning ordinance, the master plan, so there was a, the last reexamination report was two thousand thirteen, the original master plan was from two thousand four, I think there was also a reexam in two thousand eleven, which I also reviewed. I've also been to the property, and then I also reviewed Mr. Shadig's memo that he issued recently. So the property is known as block seven oh oh two, lot eleven. Unfortunately, I realize that the concept plan has the wrong block and lot on there, I don't know how that happened, but it is, for the record, block seven oh oh two, lot eleven, the street address is sixteen fifty-four Catawba Avenue. So the property totals twenty-four and a half acres. We have about six hundred feet of frontage on Catawba Avenue, the property's about seventeen-hundred-and-ninety feet deep, so it's relatively deep property. Currently, aside from the single-family home, there were farming operations that were occurring here. Surrounding uses, and let me just... This will be A two, I believe.
Correct.
So this is an aerial photo exhibit that I prepared, this is based on the most recent aerial photo available from Bing. This is a tax parcel base map. So what you see are all of the tax parcels that surround this lot. The lot in question is the one in the center, it's outlined in yellow. The difference in the yellow line, that is the surveyed boundary of the property, the other tax parcels are from the Office of GIS, so the, you know, the spatial accuracy of them varies a little bit, so it's not going to match the survey data exactly, but it gives the board an idea of the site and the surroundings. So it's a relatively flat property. So it's a relatively flat property. As I said, we have woods that are located on the front quarter that then wrap around the east side of the property, along that eastern property line. The rest of the property is primarily open, but we do have some other woods that are in the southeast corner. Surrounding land uses are primarily residential. We have Newfield Nursery that is directly to our west, so if you've driven by there lately, they have all the covers on the hoop houses. You know, at some point, as you can see in this photo, those come off, you know, during the late spring and summer months. So that's a fairly intensive agricultural operation immediately to our west. We have single-family homes along South Blue Bell Road, that is to our east, and you can see those single-family homes, relatively deep lots that narrow a little bit as you get a little farther south. And then on Catawba Avenue to the north, we have primarily single-family dwellings along, you know, immediately adjacent to the property. What you're not seeing on this aerial photo, a little bit farther to our west, so there's a property that has a single-family home, it's a construction company that also has a cement plant that's on it, that's relatively close to this property. And there's also, as I said, a telecommunications tower located on that property as well. So as I said, we're here seeking bifurcated use variance approval. So what that means is if the board were to approve the use variance, we would return for site plan approval in the future. So let's just get right into the relief and the zoning. So this is located in the residential agricultural district. It permits single-family detached dwellings, open space, and then a host of what the ordinance terms non-residential uses, which include agricultural uses, woodland preserves, game preserves, wildlife sanctuaries and management areas, municipal buildings, police stations, municipal parks, garages for the storage and repair of municipal or school board equipment, libraries, fire stations, EMS buildings, private or parochial school or school board office, municipal sewage plants and other municipal uses, and privately owned outdoor recreation areas. Accessory uses permitted include professional office within or directly connected to the dwelling, home occupations, private garages for up to three vehicles, signs, fences, swimming pools, farm labor facilities, and other farm buildings, private non-commercial athletic courts, and parking lots. And then there's also a number of conditionally permitted uses. That includes house of worship, cemetery, hospital, public utilities, mass transit stations, convalescent homes, and clubs and lodges for fraternal organizations. So again, as, it's not entirely clear that cannabis cultivation and manufacturing is permitted, we're here seeking a D1 use variance. So as to the D1, as the board has heard many times, and I'm going to go through it just for the members of the public. So on a D1 use variance, we're required to demonstrate both the positive and negative criteria. Positive criteria are generally derived from the purposes of the municipal land use law. There's also kind of a secondary element of that test that requires that we demonstrate the public welfare is promoted because this site is particularly suited to the use that we're proposing. There's also the negative criteria that we have to deal with, and that's a two-part test. The first part of the test is a demonstration that there's no substantial impairment to the public good. That refers specifically to the impact to adjacent properties, and that's established in case law. The second part is a demonstration that the grant of the variance is not detrimental or won't be substantially detrimental to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. Now, there's a Supreme Court case called Medici v. BPR where the Supreme Court added what's called an enhanced quality of proof on the second part of the negative criteria. And that is a demonstration that the grant of the variance is not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, and we have to essentially reconcile why that, why this use has not been permitted by the governing body in this district. So on the positive criteria, I think that the public welfare is promoted because the site's particularly suited. As Matt had talked about, you know, one of the attractive things about this site is that essentially on two sides of the building or the facility, we have existing buffering that we can now supplement with evergreens to enhance. We also have a significant amount of area on both the west and the south side where we could add berming, we could add additional evergreen buffering, so that we could ensure that the facility will be less visible to the adjacent properties. We also have a location, as I said, that has some pretty intensive agricultural uses directly to our west. So, you know, really at its heart, if you look at the township's definition of agriculture, this use fits within that definition. And...
No.
Mr. Chairman, could I proceed without interruption or...
You're going to have your time to speak.
So when we look at the definition of agriculture, let me just find it here. So a permitted agricultural use, and the township did amend this definition again in 2021. So it's "any production of plants or animals useful to man, including but not limited to forage or sod crops, grains and feed crops, dairy animals and dairy products, poultry, livestock, cattle, et cetera." I'm not going to read the whole thing, I'll try to dispense to the important part. It also includes, so it also says "agricultural or horticultural purpose or use can include production, harvesting, storage, grading, packaging, processing, and the wholesale and retail marketing of crops." So really at its heart, this use that we're proposing isn't agricultural use. There's harvesting of crops that occur, there's manufacturing, processing, and production that results in a product that can be wholesale to the cannabis industry. So it, you know, in my opinion, and I know some folks in the room won't agree, but when you look at this definition, I think that the use that we're proposing fits within that. It's not everybody's traditional view of agriculture that we, you know, have in the township now, but it does fit that definition. So I think when you look at the use that we're proposing, and, you know, the facility that we're proposing, the building is essentially akin to a greenhouse. It's got to be built a little differently because we need to control odor. So I think what Matt was talking about, you know, Mr. Chairman, you raised the point, you know, we know there was a facility in Vineland that had an issue with odor. There was also one in Reddington Township in Hunterdon County that was, you know, pretty widely publicized across the state. There was also another one in the town of Booton up in Morris County. And to Matt's point, which I would agree with, having reviewed a lot of these cases, all of those facilities were retrofitted into existing buildings. And that's, makes it very difficult to fully control odor. When you build a facility like this ground up, and these particular, the particular building that they're proposing here, it can essentially be made airtight so that all of the odors that are within the facility can then be run through the filtration system and ensure that they do not escape the building. So we'll see a little bit more about that in the video as we go forward. But getting back to the suitability of the site, I think for all those reasons, the location, essentially what is, you know, compatible with an agricultural use and in some ways, an agricultural use itself, and particularly when you look at the intensity of agriculture that we have in the area with the Newfield Nursery right next door, I think it does fit and the site would be suitable. There's also purposes of zoning that would be promoted, so these would be the purposes of the municipal land use law, notably Purpose A to promote the general welfare. So the grant of the variance here, it helps further the agricultural economy of the township. It's also going to provide jobs. There's a requirement in the specific license that Hyblend has. Franklin Township is located within what's called an impact zone, and the CRC requires that a minimum of 25% of the employees at this facility have to be from within the township. So there's going to be employment opportunities, you know, folks that are working in the agricultural industry now. In conversations with Matt, you know, the skills from, you know, that people might be using out in the workforce now in the agricultural industry are easily transferable here. You know, people have to go through and tend and care for plants, there's pruning, you know, things that folks are doing now in the business. There's also the manufacturing side, the training for that is a little bit more intensive, but essentially it's a skill that's teachable and we think, you know, based on the impact zone requirements, a majority of the township, excuse me, a majority of the employees for this facility will likely come from the township. So it's providing economic opportunity and also jobs. The other thing is that there is the potential benefit for the township of transfer tax from this facility. So under the current regulations of the CRC, the township is allowed to impose a transfer tax where 2% of all the proceeds from sale from this facility will go to the township into general revenue. So a lot of, you know, we don't really have good numbers on what that would be right now, I don't want to put a dollar amount on it, but other hosts, communities for these types of facilities have seen significant revenue that goes directly to the general fund. So there is a financial benefit to the township as well. Now, Purpose G is to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses. I think, again, based on what I see as an agricultural use that we're proposing here, that fits within the agricultural context of the RA District. And as I said, I believe the site's suitable based on the specific features that we have, the vegetation, and then the extra space that we're going to have left over so that we can provide adequate buffering to adjacent properties. Now, on the negative criteria, again, this refers specifically to the impact of this variance on surrounding properties. So as we're going to hear from the other two witnesses, there's really two key components to this facility that have the potential to impact the public. One is security, well, it was really three. One is traffic. So as we've described, maximum of 20 employees at this facility under the regulations of the CRC went into operation, and then a limited number of box trucks and Sprinter vans that would be coming. So when you, when you take all that together, this is not going to be a significant traffic impact on the area. You know, you're probably talking, you know, if it's 20 employees, they come, if they go out for lunch, they come back and then leave at the end of the day, it's maybe a total of 80 trips over the entire day. And again, it's a nine-to-five facility, so this is not going to be a 24/7 operation where we're going to have people coming and going, you know, on three different shifts. It's normal business hours, normal operating hours, so that should tend to limit some of the impact from the coming and going. Security, you'll hear from our security consultant tonight, there is a very sophisticated security system that goes into this. Generally, it's cameras that are mounted on the outside that have three different fields of view. They can detect a person that is trying to climb a fence, so there will be, and the site plan shows a six-foot fence, the CRC regulations actually require eight, so there'll be an eight-foot fence, not at the perimeter of the property, but just around the installation. And there's a camera system that has the ability to identify someone that's trying to climb the fence. It can differentiate between blowing leaves, a person, a deer, so it can actually tell the difference between those elements. And then, you know, we'll hear from our consultant, he'll describe the process. But essentially, the approach here is to be a deterrent. So we're going to use the camera system in conjunction with a strobe system to alert people that they've been detected. In most cases, as you'll hear, that person's going to turn around and leave immediately once they've figured out that they've been detected. So the perimeter of the site will be secured by the fence. This is a 24/7, 365 monitoring system. There is a company that provides that monitoring and then can also be in touch with local police if they need to. If the deterrents don't keep someone from trying to break into the facility, it'll get to the point where they'll then call the police department and have someone dispatched out to the site to make sure that there's no breach. Odor mitigation, so again, we'll see the video on this, but the intent and the CRC regulations, just to be clear for everyone on the board and the audience, the standard is that there can be no detectable odor outside of the facility. So many of the cases that you've heard, I'm not sure what happened with Vineland, but the other two that I mentioned, Booton and Reddington, both of those facilities were retrofit adequately to meet that standard. So if you're out of compliance, if, you know, the neighbors are smelling it and there's a complaint lodged, it's immediately the operator's responsibility to take corrective action to fix that. So as I said, what's unique here is that this will be a ground-up facility that will be built airtight, and all the filtration, the carbon filtration odor mitigation occurs inside so that none of that odor is released. And there are, you know, as you construct the facility, there are airlocks, things that ensure that that odor is not getting out to the outside of the building. And that's important. As Matt said, you know, you wouldn't want one of these facilities to go in next to you and be smelling it all day long. The regulations prohibit that, and the intent of the applicant is to design a system that will ensure that there are no detectable odors outside this facility. So we don't, we believe based on the best science that we have available in the research that the team has done, that we will be able to do that successfully, particularly given that this will be a new building. So it was really, you know, again, as we get down to those kind of three primary areas of impact, you know, we could see visual impact as a fourth area, but again, I think we have substantial opportunity through buffering berming. You know, if we were to get to the site plan phase, we can certainly work with the board's expert or with the board to come up with an additional buffering plan. That could be reforestation, it could be evergreens at select locations, just to make sure that, you know, we're not having any visual impact from this facility on the adjacent properties. So I think based on all that, this will not have a substantial impact on adjacent properties. And the thing I want to point out to the board and the public is that the word in the case law is substantial. So any use that's not permitted in a zone is going to have some impact on the neighborhood. The question is, does it rise to the level of, you know, providing forever changed circumstances? And I think, and I think as you get down to it, you know, this facility, if it were not growing cannabis, could look like any other indoor agricultural use in the township. You know, if you think about even the greenhouses that we have next door. So I think overall, there won't be a substantial impact. Again, key term being substantial. So the final part of the negative criteria is analysis of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, and again, a demonstration that the grant of the variance is not inconsistent with that intent and reconciling that use. So the RA District does contain a purpose statement, and I'll read some of these. So it's "to conserve and preserve environmentally sensitive land, including but not limited to areas containing unique and sensitive natural features such as woodlands, mature stands of forest, slopes, streams, floodplains, and wetlands. Provide greater design flexibility and efficiency for developers in the setting of services and infrastructure, including the opportunity to reduce the length of new roads, utility runs and the amount of paving required, reduce erosion and sedimentation. Conserve a variety of irreplaceable environmentally sensitive resources. Implement sound land use policies. Protect municipality with productive agricultural soils for continued or future agricultural Provide conservation and maintenance of open land and conserve the municipality's rural character." So, you know, really, the point in this analysis is to see if the grant of the variance relief that we're requesting is going to have any substantial detriment to any of those policies. And really, you know, the overarching themes in the municipal master plan are, you know, agricultural preservation, preservation of sensitive lands, open spaces, but also economic development. You know, there's talk in the 2013 reexamination report, the talk specifically about, you know, supporting the agricultural economy within the township. So unfortunately, that 2013 reexam came after the State Recreational Adult Use Act that legalized recreational marijuana use in New Jersey. So that was, you know, 2019, the reexam was 2013. So there's really not much or any discussion at all really of cannabis in the master plan. The, as I said before, the township committee did address in some way cannabis uses within Franklin. They chose to prohibit two of the six classes that are permitted under the Adult Use Act. And the two that are prohibited are the retail aspect and then the delivery aspect. So to me, you know, again, whether it was intentional or not, it's almost as if it was a signal that we're okay with one through four, but we just don't like these two. It was a little odd way to do it, but I think it does speak somewhat to the intent of the township with respect to these uses. So I think overall, when you look at the grant of the variance here, I think it does promote some of the goals noted. It does promote the agricultural economy within the township, it's going to promote jobs in the agricultural economy, and it's also going to promote a potential revenue source for the township. So in terms of the Medici enhanced proof, going through those policies related to the RA District that I went through, in my opinion, this proposal doesn't really offend any of those. So we don't have, you know, really any environmentally sensitive features on the site. There's no wetlands, streams, we have no steep slopes. We're proposing very limited removal of vegetation. We're proposing very limited removal of vegetation to accommodate the driveway. We're going to leave the rest of that intact. And again, there's the possibility that we could also engage in some reforestation and some other things that would benefit the site. So I think, overall, I think that this use does squarely fit in the agricultural definition. Again, it's not the traditional thing that we're all used to and that we've seen for the last, you know, couple hundred years. But as, you know, this economy and this use has evolved with the state's legalization, it's now part of the agricultural landscape at the end of the day. So I think for those reasons, that's really how the board could reconcile it. It's very much akin to an agricultural use. It's going to have the same aspects as the definition sets forth, and it would not be inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance.
I just have a couple of questions because there was, I believe, a misstatement. I want the record to be clear. Either I misheard you or you misspoke because I think you said that the 2013 master plan came after the cannabis legislation.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, before. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry if I misspoke. Yeah, clearly, the act was 2019, the reexam was 2013, so it was well before.
Just a couple of other questions on your testimony, very few. You read Mr. Shidley's report.
I did.
Do you have an opinion as to whether a different view could be held as to whether a variance is required on the home? It sounded like you were suggesting that.
Yeah, I think if the home were clearly used in conjunction with the business, it's not, it's still a home, but it's part of the business at that point. I would assume that with an employee in there, you know, all times of the year, you know, it's not a typical single-family.
And doesn't ordinance speak to two single-family homes?
It does. The ordinance section says that no lot shall have more than one principal residential use. So, you know, there's a question of interpretation if, you know, we're clearly proposing only one residential use. And, you know, the facility that we're proposing is essentially a commercial agricultural facility. So, you know, it could be interpreted that, you know, perhaps a variance isn't necessary for that. I think particularly since, you know, we will state affirmatively that the only person that will live in that home will be part of the business, an employee of the business.
Also, do you have an opinion as to the ordinance that you described, which excluded certain classes of cannabis businesses, but did not exclude others? Do you have an opinion as to whether that presumptively suggests that cannabis cultivation and manufacturing are allowed within the four corners of the township?
I think one could interpret it that way. I mean, obviously, the cleaner way to do this would have been to then go to the zoning ordinance and say, classes, you know, whichever, one and two are permitted in the RA District. That was a step that was not taken. But I think if you look at the ordinance, it did not prohibit all six, it only prohibited two. So it almost implies that there was a desire to have those uses permitted within the township.
I know that you've shared with me when we met earlier that you've also testified in telecommunications.
I have.
Issues. Do you believe that, again, based on your experience there, that that is at all instructive as to how this ordinance would be viewed upon interpretation?
It is. So the way that the courts, you know, typically when I go to a town and we're going to testify about a new cell tower facility, we first go and see if the township or municipality has a telecommunications ordinance. Many do, some do not. But what the courts have said in New Jersey, in particular, to telecommunications, is that, well, town, if you don't adopt an ordinance and tell people where to put these, that essentially means that, you know, every place might be suitable. So it's a parallel situation to this where, you know, again, there's no prohibition on these four classes of uses, but there's no direction as to, you know, where they should be located within the township.
And my follow-up to that is, do you have an opinion as to whether the township, as a consequence of a lack of definition, is exposed to the possibility of allowing the classes that were not excluded to be populated throughout the entire town?
It's possible. I mean, it could be construed that way.
And my final question is, and I think you hit on it, but I want to just wrap it together.
Sure.
The definition that you read on agriculture and processing, do you have an opinion as to how that fits into this application, as to cultivation and process cannabis?
Again, it does. I mean, it's, you know, and it's important to note that the definition is nonspecific in that it says including but not limited to. So here are some examples, but it's not only these things. So I think if the board looks at the facts, and again, it's any production of plants or animals. So it's not specific to, you know, certain types of plants and animals. It's kind of all-inclusive. And that's a pretty common approach to agricultural definition in the state. I mean, any agricultural-friendly community is not really going to restrict the types of agriculture that you can engage in.
And reading that language in conjunction with the other ordinance that I just referenced, exclusionary language, could in fact, an opinion be made that the township is in fact exposed to having cannabis cultivation throughout the four corners of the township right now?
So what the prohibition of class five and six does is clearly state that those uses are not permitted. When you look at this definition and the production of plants, their harvesting, their processing, their manufacture, their wholesale, those are the exact things that we're doing here at this facility. So one could conclude that only prohibiting retail sales and delivery, there was an intent that these uses would fall within the agricultural definition and be permitted in this district. So again, it's not entirely clear. I think we've applied for a D1 variance out of an abundance of caution, but, you know, we're making a case here. So I think it's an important part of the record.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions at this time. Thank you.
Pull my pad out. Mr. Kyle.
Yes, sir.
I want to see if we're going to agree on a few things from the beginning. There's two things that are going to be happening at this facility at least, right? We're going to be cultivating marijuana, right?
Correct.
All cannabis, that's what it is. Layman's terms, we're growing marijuana at the facility.
Correct.
It's all, and it's going to happen in a building.
Correct.
So we're not, we don't have any tractors, we're not plowing fields, we're not planting seeds in the building.
That's correct.
That building can go anywhere, right?
Anywhere on the site.
Anywhere in municipality, in other zones.
Um, yeah, potentially, yeah.
Yeah, that building's not particular to that. In fact, the building hasn't even been built, right?
Correct.
There's nothing particular about that building being at that site.
Um, no, I wouldn't agree with that.
All right, well, the building hasn't been built yet.
That's correct.
We can build that building in a business district, right?
Oh, you could, yeah.
We can build that building in a light manufacturing district.
You could.
And at this site, you're going to be doing a couple of different things. Not only growing the marijuana, you're going to be manufacturing products.
Correct.
All right, so it's more than just agricultural, isn't it?
This definition clearly anticipates the manufacturing of product from the agricultural product that's harvested. That's what we're doing.
Well, let's talk about the manufacturing because half the employees are going to be doing manufacturing work, correct?
Correct.
All right, and you know what, what are they going to be doing? Tell the people from the community what the employees who are part of the manufacturing process, what they'll be doing.
That's a better question from Mr. Randall.
All right, so you don't know. You're the planner, you're saying there's no negative impact or no substantial impact, but you don't know what those gentlemen are going to be doing.
We took him out of line so as to let the matter move forward. It's unfair to now say, because we haven't finished Mr., we haven't finished Matt's testimony. So it's unfair to say he doesn't know. I would say after the testimony, that would be the appropriate time to ask that question.
Mr. Chairman, I was very patient. I didn't interrupt Mr. Magazoo.
You're making a bad record, Mr.
I would ask not to be interrupted when I make my presentation.
So.
Make my record, that's all.
Sir, there is an, the CEO of the company is here. He can describe to you the manufacturing process. I'm generally familiar with it, but I'm not the witness to provide that detail.
Before the record, the certified planner who's testifying as to the positive and negative criteria, that certified planner does not know exactly what type of manufacturing will occur on site.
No, this planner does know. If you want it for the record, I suggest you get it from Mr. Randall.
Well, I want to know what you know because you're basically, you're giving the everybody, you're giving the board an opinion.
First of all, I didn't.
I want to know, I want to know upon which you, how do you come up with that opinion? What are they doing there?
So there is no aspect of the manufacturing process that is in any way hazardous. So there's no use of, you know, harsh chemicals. You know, this is a natural product. So there's nothing in the manufacturing process that could be potentially detrimental to the adjacent properties.
All right, well, let me ask you this. Mr. Randall did mention, he mentioned edibles. We know at least that. They're going to be, they're going to be getting the marijuana and somehow turning it into edible products.
Correct.
Things you can eat or drink.
Right.
As well as turning it into oils. I heard that mentioned as well.
Correct.
How about vaping, canisters? Do you know one way or the other whether that's going to occur on site?
I do know now.
Okay. But we do know manufacturing is going to occur on site, and we also know that manufacturing is not a permissible use in this zone, right?
I disagree.
All right, well, we know that we're here for a use variance because the professionals have determined that it's not permitted in the zone.
And that's their opinion.
Okay. So you disagree with the professionals, but for purposes of tonight, we can all agree that it is not something that is, that is allowed in this zone. Because they're, let me ask you this.
No, we can't, no, no. Can I answer the question? Can you ask me a question? Can I answer it?
Absolutely.
The definition of agriculture specifically includes the word manufacturing. So manufacturing does occur in this zone. So taking a product, raw product, processing it into something else is manufacturing.
But here, we're going to be doing manufacturing on a fairly significant scale, right? Because we're proposing, let's take a look at this board that has been.
Yeah, I don't know that I would agree with that.
Well, we have a 20,000-square-foot building, right?
Correct, yep.
We have a 3,500-square-foot administration building.
Right.
We have a 4,000-foot generation generator.
1,000 square feet.
1,000 square feet?
Correct.
I stand corrected. I thought the application said four thousand.
That was the initial building and the initial plan that was submitted to the board. We've supplemented the application with a smaller building. So you were correct, at one time it was four, but now it's one.
Okay, so it's 1,000 square feet.
Yep.
And none of these buildings exist now?
They do not.
They would all have to be built and ground up.
Yep.
Now, we can agree, because as the planner, I'm sure you drove down Cadaba Avenue.
I did.
Okay, and you can, you agree that there are single-family homes on both sides of Cadaba Avenue?
Except for the cement plant, yeah.
And do you realize that cement plant's closed? We're out of business?
It's still there.
Okay, but it's closed. Were you also aware that that was a pre-existing?
Oh, I was sure, I was sure it was.
Okay.
I know that didn't just pop up there.
Now, in addition to the 3,500-square-foot administration building, the 20,000-square-foot building, and the generator building, we also have fences being put up.
Correct.
And we also have security checkpoints.
Uh, there's one security checkpoint.
Well, the plan I looked at that was provided with your, unless the application's been changed, the one I looked at had two.
So there's a 48-square-foot guardhouse internal to the property, so on the south side of the tree line, on the east side of the driveway. So that'll be a check-in point for anybody coming to the facility.
Now, we used a lot of language because I know there's a lot of bases you have to touch as a certified planner. But what this is, is a commercial operation, right?
Just like the commercial operation next door.
That's permitted in the zone though, isn't it?
Correct.
Okay, this one's not, though, isn't it?
Again, not so sure about that, but.
Bear with me, Mr. Chairman, while I look at my notes. Now, tell me again the positive criteria that you are asserting exists.
So the site is suitable for the use based on the specific physical characteristics, the size, the vegetation.
So the positive criteria is not that it's inherently beneficial or that there's a hardship. What you're relying upon for purposes of the board tonight is that you're saying it's particularly suited for the intended use?
That, and there's also purposes of the MLU that are promoted.
Okay. And you're saying it's particularly suited for the intended use despite the fact that none of the buildings have been built yet?
Right.
All right, so really, all we have is a large tract of land.
Correct.
And that large tract of land could be, today, we're in a residential zone, but could be anywhere. There's nothing special about it because there's nothing on it other than a house.
No, that's, that's not what I said. What I described was there are specific characteristics of this property, physical conditions. So the substantial tree canopy that we have on the northern quarter and the eastern side of the property that will allow us to conceal this building from two sides completely. So that is particular to this property.
Now, we also know that you had said there'd be a minimal impact because of there's going to be 20 employees. They would only go to lunch. However, there might be more employees, right?
Um.
In fact, your application says so.
It could be.
Yeah, your application says, well, you know, if we do well, we're going to have even more employees. So we really don't know how many employees may end up there.
So that is based on the potential ability to have a different license at this site in the future. So what we're here tonight to talk about specifically is a micro-licensed facility that the applicant is currently conditionally approved for by the CRC.
Okay. Subject to jail. Sir, you had read earlier portions of the ordinance about things that were allowed and things that were not allowed.
Right.
You didn't read the purposes, any of the purposes of the ordinance of this zone. Are you familiar with those purposes?
I did read through them. So when I talked about the second prong of the negative criteria, I specifically stated the purposes which are in 253-104.
Okay. Well, I'm going to read some sections from 253-104, and you tell me if I'm reading this correctly.
Okay.
All right, let's talk, the very first sentence of the very first paragraph of the ordinance. It says that the purpose of the residential agricultural zone is to conserve and preserve environmentally sensitive land, including but not limited to those areas containing unique and sensitive natural features such as woodlands consisting of mature stands of forest, steep slopes, streams, floodplains, and wetlands by preventing development thereon. Did I read that correctly?
You did.
Okay. So one of the purposes is to conserve and preserve environmentally sensitive land by preventing development of that land?
That's not what it says. It says by developing the central map, sensitive natural features. And as I said, we are proposing very limited tree removal just to accommodate the driveway. We have no steep slopes, we have no streams, we have no floodplains, and we have no wetlands.
All right, are you asking, are you asking this board to accept that the construction of this facility, this manufacturing facility, conserves and preserves the environmentally sensitive land?
No. Again, all I'm saying is that there are none of those features present on this property. And we do have woodlands. I didn't assess the nature of them. I don't know if they would be considered mature forests or not, but we're proposing very limited removal. We are not, we have none of these features on this site, and we are not, so it says specifically, preventing development thereon of the sensitive features, not of the land in general.
Says including but not limited to, though, doesn't it, sir?
Okay. That's semantics. I'm not going to argue the point with you. I think it very clearly intends that we're not going to develop or disturb those particular, and it could be other things, but that's what this says.
All right, if we move down to paragraph H, it says, one of the purposes is to create neighborhoods with direct visual access to open land. See that?
Hmm.
All right, well, we're building some buildings and fences and guard posts and generators here, so that clearly interferes with visual access to open land, doesn't it?
Those could be elements of any permitted farm use in this community. Greenhouses, hoop houses, things like that.
But here, we're manufacturing, we're not just farming.
We're manufacturing essentially agricultural products.
And finally, under paragraph I, to provide for the conservation and maintenance of open land within the municipality to achieve the above-mentioned goals for active or passive recreational use by township residents.
Hmm.
Right, it's another purpose set forth in the ordinance?
It is.
All right. And finally, to conserve the municipality's rural character and to minimize perceived density by minimizing views of new development from existing roads. Did I read that correctly?
You did.
Okay.
And I believe we're doing that.
So by building this facility, this generation, generating station, and administrative offices in a residential zone, we're doing those things. Is that what you're asking this board to believe?
So on that particular purpose that you just read, it says very specifically, by minimizing views of new development from existing roads. As I said, we're putting this facility behind a pretty substantial area of woodlands, so so it will not be visible from the road. So I think it's right on point with that one.
It's not your testimony that as long as we block it out, excuse me, as long as we block it out, that it's permissible, right?
Uh, no, I don't think the intent is that it be completely blocked out. We can do that if the board felt it was necessary to approve the variance, but...
Okay. So, just really clear, the positive criteria that relying upon is just that you, it's your testimony that this lot is particularly suited, and we can agree that there's nothing on the lot today other than bare ground and a single, one single-family home?
For the reasons that I've reiterated many times now, I think it's suitable, and it's not just the fact that it's an open lot.
It can still be used as a single-family home, though, that property, if the owner wanted to use it, right?
Sure.
Okay. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Good evening.
Again, for the record, it's Tony Jeffrey Downs. Um, what's the purpose of a planner generally, if you could explain to, to the people here? Is it to harmonize existing uses among one another?
Um, to a certain extent. I mean, you know, in my role as a municipal planner, um, you know, looking at zoning schemes, yeah, you would, you would strive to do that, sure.
You mentioned four criteria, traffic, security, odor, visual.
Correct.
What was that, what are those four things, root?
So when we look at the first prong of the negative criteria and any impact to adjacent properties, you know, we're looking for potential negatives, and those are really the four that, that I keyed in on.
Do you understand that one, very important one, is an assessment of the proposed variance's impact on the surrounding properties?
Yeah, that's what those four points are...
Well, no, and also, you didn't have any testimony as to value of these people's homes. Did you do any assessment of, test how this affects the value?
I did not.
Okay. How about the visual characteristic of the 20 employees going in and out? Do you think that affects the value of these people's homes?
I mean, not any more than a commercial farm that's located on this property that has employees coming and going.
Is a commercial farm, is a commercial farm on this property present?
No, you asked me about the coming and going of employees.
Talk about this specific use. Your job as a planner is to reconcile how this use can fit in with other uses, correct?
Correct.
And we're talking only today about this use. You don't want another commercial farming coming to go against your client's directives, correct?
My, my point is that a commercial farm permitted on this property could have 20 employees just like this facility could, and those people will come and go the same as the employees from this facility. There's no difference.
But that's not in front of the board, correct?
You're correct.
Okay. I mean, it's important, because the whole purpose of your profession is this specific part of the analysis, isn't it?
It is.
You're right. So, do you understand the Supreme Court indicating that objecting neighbors have an equal say because of values their property interests, correct?
I'm not familiar with that specific finding, no.
All right, so in the future, if you wanna read Woodland Civic Association versus Brick Homes on 144 New Jersey, Super 78, will be helpful.
Sure.
Mentioned security, does this have potential security risk for the neighbors of the property?
Um, no, not based on the conversations that, that we've had with the team.
What conversations have you had with the team?
The security system that'll be in place for this facility are state-of-the-art. So the, the risk, there's no risk from the operation itself. You know, the, the potential risk is someone trying to breach the facility and break in and get any of the product, any, you know, anything like that.
Well, is it the whole point of that security because this is attractive to a certain group of people to go in?
No, I wouldn't say that.
Well, so there's other uses that you argue in front of boards all the time?
Sure.
And they always incur, involve patrol stations and security?
The reason that is in place is because of the regulations of the state.
And why do you think the regulations of the state are...
To provide safety for the facility and for the residents.
Okay, are those regulations in play for other commercial uses that you argue in front of board frequently?
Um, depends on the use. There, there could be.
Give me one or two that you can remember.
So if you think about, there's some other uses that we've worked on that would have security elements. I'm trying to think of a specific instance.
Well, then, it's difficult to think of that, correct?
Um, yeah, but again, this is, you know, in part, it's probably a step that the owner would take anyway, but these regulations are specific to the license requirements of the CRC.
You presented this to the board, correct?
I did.
What is the character of this neighborhood as described by you as a planner?
Primarily residential.
Okay.
And agricultural.
Yeah. Well, it's primarily residential, what's agricultural?
There's, I, I see both on that photo.
But there's open field. There's no agricultural activity, correct? Is there presently agricultural activity from somebody who bought the property a year and a half ago?
What's agricultural activity? I mean, it's, you know, it could be anything.
Well, no. Agricultural, as you described, it has a specific meaning. Right now, it's just open space and residential properties.
Yeah, that it, at one point, has a crop on it that's harvested and processed and sold.
Do you understand that this facility could cause people to have difficulty selling their homes in the future?
I, no.
How many brokers or realtors have you spoke to?
Again, I'm not a real estate expert, so I'm not gonna... You asked me if I was, you asked me if I was aware. I'm not aware.
I understand you're not a real estate expert, I'm not a planning expert.
Okay.
But I seek other planners to learn information about you. I'm asking if you saw information from any brokers or realtors?
No.
As to how this could affect the value of the property?
I did not.
Do you understand that's a, a major criteria of the negative criteria to present in front of the board?
Real estate values?
Yes.
I'm gonna be honest, I've probably worked on a thousand cases, and I've never once talked about real estate value and negative criteria.
Okay, so is it your testimony that the change in use negatively affecting the neighborhood's property's values have no analysis at all?
What I said was that's not analysis that I conducted, and then that I don't normally conduct. There are instances where I have cases where they will bring a real estate expert in, but it's rare. It's, it's primarily in telecommunications cases.
The scale of this project, it's large, right? It's 20 employees plus?
Um, not large compared to other operations that I've...
Well, when you go into a residential community and see the variants frequently, and you're talking about small business, how many employees generally are you arguing to a board to allow those employees to, to be there?
Small business, I mean, that's usually, you know, someone that has a repair garage in an outbuilding, might have one other employee.
Why do you think these people can only have three garages and three cars on their property?
I don't know what the intent of that was.
Okay. Do you think having 20 employees is consistent with what they have to hold up to, or is it something different?
Um, this is different. We're not proposing a single-family home here. It's not, it's not relevant.
Aesthetics. Do you understand aesthetics is a proper component of the negative criteria?
It is, and I discussed it.
Okay. Do you think that the people in this room find this aesthetically pleasing to them?
I would doubt it.
Meaning it's not?
I think we've heard that pretty clearly already.
In your analysis as a planner?
Yeah.
Isn't this information that you seek to try to provide testimony so the board has an equal footing as to what to understand, as to what they should do?
It is, and that's why I made the important point, referring to the concept plan. We have significant areas around the perimeter of this facility. So we have 144 feet on the east side, and even considering the area inside the fence, we have 275 to the west. So the point is that there's significant opportunity to provide additional buffering. We showed conceptually areas where we could have evergreen trees, you know, places where there were gaps, there's a home on the new field nursery that we can buffer. But again, we are not opposed to installing significant landscape buffering to address the visual concern. And if the board can make that a condition, it would essentially reduce that in the negative criteria analysis.
What characteristics, um, go into this type of neighborhood? How would you describe it, what are the characteristics?
Of this neighborhood?
Yes.
So there's a variety of single-family homes, some large, some small, and we also have a variety of, of agricultural uses in the area. So I mean, you're, you're looking at just the aerial photograph of this area, but as you, you know, kinda get out wider, I mean, this is the residential agricultural zone. Those two uses are meant to coexist in this district.
Is it your testimony to the board that this use does not change the character of this neighborhood?
In my opinion, it does not.
Okay. Well, you indicate you are in front of 244 boards. How many times have you been in front of a board objecting to an application like this?
Never.
Thank you.
Applause are extra. Uh, just to follow up to Mr. Downs' questions, uh, I'm looking at the map that we've submitted.
So that's A2.
A2. Could you, directly, I don't know if it's north or south, but adjacent to...
West.
West to the property, question. Could you identify, would you believe, uh, first of all, would you identify what you believe that is?
Yeah, those are hoop houses on the new field nursery. So right now, in this photograph, the, the plastic covers are off, uh, which is typical. You know, you get to a certain point in the season, they come off, and then they stay like this.
Would you agree with me that it's, you know, by configuration, that parcel is probably 70 or 80% of the size of the parcel that we're talking about?
That parcel is the same length, but it's not as wide. So I'm, I'm gonna estimate, we're at 600, that's probably 450, roughly.
Eighteen point nine eight.
All right, so we're 24.5, so...
Okay, so the ratio's about what I said. The questions by Mr. Parenti and Mr. Downs, did any of those questions in any way change any of the opinions that you expressed in your testimony?
Did not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, appreciate it.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Don't let me walk away.
Any more questions?
Yeah.
Not this time.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a presentation?
Thank you.
I think we're ready for the, uh, odor presentation, correct? Is that ready to go? Hopefully, the technology will cooperate.
I'm sorry?
This is the security order, or the odor order.
I guess.
growing environment. However, controlling odor emissions has proven a challenge for many cultivators. We have solved this problem by harnessing the combined strength of our three divisions, Bayer's emissions analysis, Bayer's mitigation solutions, and Bayer's intelligence systems. Here's how it works. All plants off gas at a measurable rate. When it comes to cannabis plants, these gases can contain objectionable odors. During the day, these odors release continuously through a greenhouse's ridge fence. But at night, when the light deprivation curtains and vents are typically closed, gas and associated odors build up. That large collection of gas suddenly released in the morning when the ridge vents are opened is the most common source of local odor complaints. Fortunately, Bayer Scientific has developed a patented technology and system to make those complaints a thing of the past. It all starts with a very important first step: analysis. As mentioned, all plants off gas at a measurable rate. In the case of cannabis plants, there can be up to 200 unique compounds present, making odor assessment extremely complex. The Bayer's emissions analysis division is one of the only research teams in North America with the ability to calculate the unique gas phase emission rate for any size of canopy. Our team of globally-recognized scientists assess this rate along with the size and environment of each facility to provide a customized compliance solution that measures emissions, mitigates odors, and streamlines industrial operations. Now, let's talk hardware. Bayer's state-of-the-art technology consists of two key components: molecular filtration, also known as carbon scrubbers, and our patented dry vapor phase technology. Based on our emission assessment, we start by calculating the appropriate number of Bayer's MT6 carbon scrubbers necessary for the facility. The MT6 carbon scrubbers rely on a physical reaction called adsorption. During this crucial phase, the scrubbers intake odorous gases and via adsorption, sequester odor-causing compounds at the molecular level, and then return the scrubbed air to the greenhouse. By continuously scrubbing the interior air while it is effectively trapped in the greenhouse, our MT6 units remove nearly 100% of odorous gases as they are emitted from the canopy. Then, as light deprivation curtains are retracted and roof vents are opened, our patented waterless vapor vapor phase system gets to work. Odor compounds that aren't already sequestered in the carbon scrubber phase are mitigated as they pass through a virtual curtain of dry vapor emitted along each ridge vent. This ecosystem of odor and emission solutions helps cultivators achieve compliance, operate efficiently, scale smoothly, and, most importantly, have happy neighbors. The best part about this revolutionary technology? You control it all from the palm of your hand by way of Bayer's intelligence systems. Our cloud-based platform allows our proprietary hardware and software to communicate seamlessly with one another, as well as with a greenhouse or any other facility's control system. This achieves a highly orchestrated, fully-integrated odor control solution. At Bayer Scientific, we know that when it comes to cultivation facilities, one size does not fit all. We deliver a personalized solution backed by science, innovation, and custom analysis, all accessible from wherever you are, whenever you need it.
I'm just gonna ask one or two questions.
Please, please. Sure.
I just, again, for the record, I just wanted to place an objection to the video on the record, because it's hearsay, it's an advertisement, and...
Sales pitch.
We're supposed to be here, it's a sales pitch, exactly. Just for the record...
Be here to testify live so that Mr. Downs and I have the chance to call the examiner.
Well, actually, um, that was, and we have someone here live, uh, but for the benefit of the audience, so they would have context, we decided to show the video. So Mr. Parenti was just a bit too soon on his objection. Secondly, um, I believe case law allows hearsay in these type of proceedings, but nonetheless, I will ask Mr. Randall one question about... Matt, just come here for a second. Just, 'cause I'm not sure I made it on the record, and then I'll, I'll call our expert. Would you indicate the research, just for a minute or two, the research you went into to determine to use this type of technology?
Uh, I would definitely, I definitely wanna kind of pass that over to the odor mitigator, but in regards to the technology that I've researched, this is, this is instrumental, this is world-renowned technology. Uh, as I mentioned in the video, I've had direct communication with the owner of that company as well. Uh, they have board-certified scientists they continuously consult, continuously work with, in order to always optimize and improve the system. Uh, and it's one of the only one that I've seen in the market that has ongoing, ongoing technology and ongoing education of not only their, you know, their employees, but also their equipment and continue to, to increase the capabilities.
All right, I'm gonna bring our, our expert as to the odor control up.
Is Mr. Randall done, um, testifying?
No, I just was responding to your...
Okay, I just wanted to keep things in order.
No, no, no. So if, if you would identify your name and your educational background first.
My name is Jesse McDonald. Uh, I went to Barry University for pre-medical biology. During that time, I also created a new molecule, um, that I presented at the 251st American Chemical Society Symposium. So my traditional background is in, uh, chemistry, physical chemistry, and biochemistry, and, um, yeah.
Okay, now, also, uh, what, what was the, uh, you saw the video, which I wanted to establish. You've had the opportunity to do research into... had the opportunity to do research into this technology. Would you tell the board why, and you're not employed by this company, first of all, is that correct? Okay, I want to make sure that was clear. Why do you recommend this type of technology for this purpose?
Well, that was just a visual aid to show that it works even in greenhouses where they do open the windows, and that will allow a lot more to escape. The building that we're building is going to be multiple sealed rooms, this is how they build clean rooms. And with the 99.9% effectiveness, that's per room, and then there's adjacent rooms where there's redundancies with this technology. So not only does it remove particulate in the air, but it also removes anything down to the gas size, right, any gases. So these are aromatic hydrocarbons. You know, any of the smells that would be produced by anything, it filters through a liquid phase filtration, along with solid state and the activated carbon filtration. So it gets, it's 99.9% effective per room, and we, again, we have redundancies, so it's even, you know, even better.
I neglected to ask you, and my apologies, about your experience in the industry. You actually worked in the industry, had this type of responsibility at another location. Would you talk a little bit about that, please?
Yep. In Florida, for True Leaf, they're the third-largest cannabis company in the world. They opened five 24,000-square-foot buildings up in the Panhandle, and they hired me to run the flower buildings. And I did that, you know, effectively.
And what was your responsibility when you say run, and particularly with respect to odor mitigation?
So as a flower building grow manager, we had to, I set up the whole building, you know, got everything running, and made sure that there was no smell leakage or, you know, any issues.
And you did that successfully?
Yes.
And based on your education and your experience and your research and review of the video that we showed, do you have an opinion as to whether this type of equipment can in fact provide 99.9% odor mitigation?
Yeah, so it's scientifically proven. When you use, when you use activated carbon, the way it works is it has small pores that capture anything that's passed through it, right? So the way these machines work, it uses multiple activated carbon filters with also molecular filtration, which is a liquid phase, where that grabs most of the gas, grabs 99.9% of the gas molecules per unit per room. And then we're going to have multiple units in subsequent rooms outside of this initial flowering area. So if there was even a small molecule, parts per billion, that made it into the next room, that would be taken up by the machine, and there would be nothing that would escape it, only.
My specific question was, based on your experience and your research and your qualifications and the video and the independent research you've done, do you believe that this technology has the capacity to mitigate odors to 99.9% as indicated?
Absolutely, beyond, beyond that, yes.
Not tonight, but another time, I'd be very interested in learning about this molecule. I would never have a clue how to do it, I got to see in chemistry, but that's for another day.
Did you ever have a complete in Florida for any of the facilities?
No.
Was it located in residential area?
Yeah, there was residences nearby.
Well, that's a good question.
There were, I mean, there were people, houses that people lived in nearby, residences.
Now, I'm going to do something most lawyers shouldn't do, and that's ask a question without knowing the answer. You've seen this document, which I think has been marked as S2? You see how, you see the approximate location of these homes to the location that we're identifying?
Yes.
Based on where you work, to answer the chairman's question, were any of the homes as close to this location in Florida as we have, as we have here?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And were they as numerous?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So it uses activated carbon, which is small pores?
Terpenes.
Okay.
What happens to that, those trapped parts? Do they get recycled somehow?
Yeah, well, they're disposed of properly. Well, there's procedures to dispose of carbon, you know, it's just charcoal, but, yeah. I'm sorry?
Where do they go?
Well, there's, we have disposal companies that we, you know, have, they take the waste to waste dispensaries, but it doesn't release the smell once it's caught in the carbon.
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the actual...
Disposal of the carbon?
So how often are they picked up, disposed of, you know?
So that's, with these, that's the good thing about the Byers Scientific MT6s. And also, they, I mean, those will tell us, but also we have, in our facility, we're going to have spectral cameras that show plasma off-gassing from the plants. So we're going to know exactly how many smells and terpenes are coming out in order to make sure that the grow is as optimal as possible for how many photons are putting onto the plants. And so basically, we have like multiple layers of technology that's watching these aromatic hydrocarbons that we smell, everybody smells as, you know, that will be able to mitigate, you know, any of these issues of smell.
Yeah, I wasn't worried about the smell, I was worried about the byproduct. Does it go to a normal answer?
Well, it would depend on the, you know, how many, like, each strain might produce a different amount of terpenes. So we would obviously, you know, watch that very closely and make sure that the carbon is not overloaded, it's very clear, you can see... Some idea of how often, for 2,500 square foot? I mean, it would be initially, I guess there would, it would be a maintenance check once a week, and then a possible replacement of the carbon filtration tube once a month. Well, it's a little bit involved, or get, I don't want to get too into the weeds.
Get as involved as you need to be to answer the chairman's question, answer his question.
Okay, so like I was saying, it depends on each strain, right? Different strains put out different amounts of terpenes. Those terpenes will fill up the carbon, the activated carbon sooner, or, you know, it depends on how many. And we will, it's able, you're able to keep an eye on this, and it's noticeable and trackable through many different forms, not only with the spectral cameras, but also with the machines itself. And then with that, once they get full, we dispose of them as needed.
Chairman, we will have testimony about disposal through Mr. Randell. And I want to just...
We want to hear it now.
I want to put, I'm putting an objection on the record, Mr. Chairman, of the constant interruptions by the audience. I understand, but I thought matters would be appropriate. And also, it's going to make the record a mess upon appeal.
We have a right to know.
That is a fair question. So the question, the question that the chairman is trying to get is for you to quantify, I think what he's trying to get, quantify, based on your experience, assuming 2,500 square feet, how much of the byproduct would have to be disposed of? And Mr. Randell may have to be the one to testify, it's the second piece, and how is it disposed of?
Okay, so...
I think that was your question.
How, so how often?
Yes.
Would be dependent upon the strains, that's the point. We keep, we keep an eye on it to make sure that we are always using fresh carbon. So, so it would be once a month initially, right? Once a month, they would be changed out for new activated carbon tubes, and if...
Excuse me, how big are they, once a month, when you say a day?
So it's probably about 20 pounds of activated carbon per MT6 machine. No.
Okay, I don't have any further...
Well, the other question you had about how it's disposed, there are special companies that we are going to be subcontracted to do this specific disposal.
And Mr. Randell will testify as to that, because he's the one responsible for that. I don't have any further questions, I don't know, Mr. Parenti or Mr. Downs.
I have just a couple.
Sure.
Sir, I didn't get your name?
Jesse.
Jesse, what's that name?
McDonald.
Jesse McDonald, Mr. McDonald, just to be clear, what you did in Florida is you oversaw an odor mitigation system.
I was a flower building grow manager, so it was the buildings where the flowers are produced, and that would be the time when the terpenes would be produced.
You don't have any particular expertise in odor mitigation? You don't have, for example, you don't have any affiliation with that company?
I don't have an affiliation with the company.
You didn't design any system or anything like that?
Not for that company.
So the extent of your experience is what you had in Florida when you were overseeing it as the manager?
Yes, but I also implemented the setup of these systems.
And we all hope these systems work, right, when we put them in?
Yep.
But can we agree that they don't always work?
That's the point of the redundancies, that makes sure that they will in fact always work.
Can we agree that at some locations, there are complaints that are made about odor despite the odor mitigation systems that are in place?
Well, I don't know what odor mitigation systems they would be using, so I can't speak to that.
Whatever it may be, we can agree that there are complaints sometimes at other facilities, in other locations.
Possibly.
Okay, well, you've certainly heard of that being in the industry, right?
Yeah, but they're usually with greenhouses, where they open the windows and...
But complaints, but there have been complaints with mitigation systems in place that you're aware of, aren't there?
Not as far as I'm aware of.
Okay, but your experience is limited to the location in Florida?
Well, I've been a consultant since then, so it's a little bit beyond that.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. McDonald, a few quick questions.
Yep.
This is the chairman and the board asked the majority of the questions I wanted to ask you. Are you hired by Highland LLC as a consultant or employee or in a contract?
A consultant, yes.
A consultant on board for how long?
As, you know, as a partner.
So you're a partner in the business?
Yeah.
So your testimony today is not a non-bias testimony, but it's as an employee or a partner of a company?
Well, yeah, I mean, I was employed for my knowledge of how to mitigate smells and how to set up grows, because I've been doing it for so long for such large companies that I've been able to use, you know, the best technology and find out how well it works. And I've been doing it for a long, you know, a long time since.
And how long have you been doing it?
Well, Truly was in 2019, I've been consulting since, for a large company, it's like parallel...
A long time from 2019 to today?
Yeah.
Okay. And then in Florida, what are the, what's the address of this, where you were grow manager?
Well, I'm under an NDA, I don't know if I can disclose that.
Is the name that you mentioned?
It's in the Panhandle, it's near Tallahassee, I can tell you it's 30 minutes from Tallahassee. That's where their main grow facilities are.
When you mentioned the name of your employer, is that the true name of the employer?
True Leaf, the true, the true name is George Hackney, Inc.
Okay. And do you know specifically of that name, you're under an NDA? Like, what prevents me from finding that company now that you gave me the name?
I mean, you could, I just, you know, that's the name of the company.
Okay.
I can tell you the name of the company, I just, you know, location.
All right, just let me follow up with Mr. Parenti's question about, oh, the odor mitigation in all the places in the world. Did any of, to your knowledge, these play, these phantom places that Mr. Parenti mentioned, were they using this technology?
No.
Okay. Did, I want to ask you again, because of the questions by Mr. Parenti specifically, is there anything in his questions that changes your testimony as to the efficiency of this technology?
No.
Now, you understand that you were sworn under oath at the very beginning?
Yes, I do.
You understand you had an obligation to testify truthfully?
Yep.
You understand if you said anything that was not truthful because of any reason or any bias, you'd be subject to be prosecuted for perjury? And is that a yes or a no? And therefore, your testimony is true and accurate and complete to the best of your ability?
Yes, thank you.
Next, any questions from the board? Okay, security is next. All right. This is the last piece of the puzzle, a little bit out of order. Just to be clear, Mr. Randell had made a call, I guess he spoke with someone from the office who indicated that we would be able to have the security expert testify by telephone. And that is the arrangement that's being made right now.
He's supposed to be sworn...
Yeah, of course. And the principal purpose will be to accompany the video and explain the video.
You've got to be aligned with the bathroom.
Mr. Chairman, you want to get him sworn? Are you ready?
Yes.
So I guess I'm going to say, you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're going to give.
You should respond, Mr. White.
Can you move the phone, please?
Yeah, this is just going to be for him to see.
Public to hear, but not for him to hear.
You have to be right here for him.
Hold on one second, we have the chairman calling over to the phone, this is where you are.
Mr. White, raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're about to give.
I do.
State your name and your address, please.
I'm Casey White, C582 Old Town Pass, Swiss Road, New York, 2303...
Mr. Mike. And what are your credentials, Mr. White?
So I'm a security consultant, installer, buyer, a salesperson my entire life, I've been doing it since I was 12, I'm now 64, so that's been in the industry over 20 years. And I currently run an operation, also in the city of New York, with five offices and 45 employees. And I have been doing a head of it related to security consulting, it's a vulnerable phase throughout the US, top rounds.
All right, will you get all your testimony out? Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I don't know if, can he, Mr. White, can you hear me from there? Yeah. Can we bring that up on the higher up or something? Because it's only going to work if everybody can hear. Mr. White, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, when you're...
When I project, well, I'll try to do that. Mr. White, my name is Lou Magazoo, and I represent Mr. Randell. You have provided us, I believe, with a PowerPoint, is that correct, sir?
That's correct.
And the PowerPoint, well, I'm going to ask you to go through it in a bit, but one question that the chairman did not ask you, and I think you were getting to, although I think you said you're working from 12, I don't know if there's any child labor laws there, but I'll accept that. But, Mr. White, how many consultations have you done for cannabis cultivation and/or manufacturing, and/or processing facilities nationally?
Uh, between 25 and 30.
Okay. Now, did you prepare the slide that we're about to see?
Yes, I did.
Okay. With that, Mr. Chairman, what I'm going to ask, we're going to try to do this, Mr. Randell, Matt is going to go through the slides, Mr. White, we're going to indicate the slides one by one and have you identify them, okay? All right.
Hold on, can we, ask Mr. Barrow, we might be able to get him on a Google Meet that can go on the screen so we can see him and maybe hear him a little better?
The chairman is...
How long is that going to take? We're struggling with all of this.
Can everybody hear? Okay. I'm most comfortable in 1965. All right, if you would, Mr. White, if you would, we're going to go through the slides, and just so you know, we've got the board and also a very interested audience, so I want you to take your time and kind of describe the slides. Matt?
Okay.
Yeah, let's just do that, let's keep on moving. We're going to use the original deck, not the one that you put all the pretty pictures for, for this, this one, but I want to explain how the security is going to work. Matt, I'm going to... Okay, so the very first thing is literally your, your reference of cannabis cultivation, security solutions, High Blend LLC. The next slide, let's go through the next slide. All right, if you would, please, sort of talk to us about the next slide that says, starts with a security communication company based in New York State.
Yes, so this is just describing what kind of era I'm in, so we are a custom-designed security operation that consults with our clients as well as installs and maintains, as well as provide 24/7 monitoring services for video intrusion and fire alarms for businesses when they're not on site and when they don't have operators managing the security workstation.
Okay, next slide. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
It also works closely with the different jurisdictions, New York, New Jersey, in designing our systems to meet code, it meets state regulations, so that these individual cannabis operators doesn't have to worry about anything when we're doing cannabis, because we know all the problems and what we need to do to beat them in most cases, also be...
Now, once you're engaged, once you're engaged for a properly approved cannabis facility, what interaction do you typically have with the local police department?
So typically, we would, we would put all of our devices in our design and drawing. If it's still in two-dimensional phase or four buildings, we would discuss this plan, lay out all the things and how they're going to be code, as well as get input from the local jurisdiction on interactions with, with locals, what type of challenges that we may not know about, not being from the area, not being there every day, so we would take additional input to know, you know, where traffic might be walking by, so we can boost camera coverage or intrusion coverage in those different areas.
Now, you, did you have an opportunity to review the site in question that's being proposed?
I have not.
How about virtually, online?
Google Earth.
Yeah, Google Earth. All right, so yeah, you answered the question, so you looked through Google Earth, and you also were supplied with drawings on this, about this, regarding the site, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, next slide, please. So it says, "Security Risk Assessment."
Yes, so basically, these are just the kind of stuff that you take in layers, there's the undertaking of the camera coverage and automation of perimeter intrusion alerts, so like camera, like television, that's a person, vehicle, wildlife.
All right, stop for a second, you're talking really fast, and we've got a big room here. Say that again for me.
So we desire camera coverage to cover the entire perimeter building, and the cameras themselves have automatic analytics that detect and analyze the view all the time. So when it's viewing, let's say, inside of a building at night, it can actually tell you if there's a person or vehicle present, the direction of travel, if they're coming close or moving away from the building. And it also ignores things like wildlife, it ignores things like rain conditions, lizards, so it can actually alert the, our monitoring center after hours, someone getting into , say, 30th building, or we can actually intelligently detect the person trying to climb the fence. So the idea is to create a perimeter around the building so that a person coming towards the building at, let's say, 7:00, 8:00 o'clock at night, or 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, would automatically trigger a local alarm that will identify to these perpetrators who are being recorded, and then the strobe light flashing, that if they're continuing to move closer to the building, now that triggers a human interaction with an on-site monitoring center, so then, yeah, to dispatch police if the person continues to ultimately break into the building.
Now, could you tell the, the board and also the audience about the access control options you have?
Yes, so as far as access control goes for employee entry, we have the ability to file measures as well as farm credential technology, so for super-secure doors like the vaults or areas where big products are created, we can force finger breaks or an iris scan or facial recognition, as well as a card, so that you have dual back authentication, so that you don't have just one credential to get in. And then every single door that leads into an area where this product, there will be a marked card reader, so every single door is being audited for every single level. So you know at any given moment who is entering through with both access audits as well as camera backup.
How do you deal with deliveries and also visitors?
And so a visitor would typically go to a visitor entry or, let's say, a delivery person, like with a loading dock, so at those doors, we have a video intercom station. So they actually press the button, they're being recorded on video the whole time, that button goes to somebody's smartphone or somebody's computer, where they determine whether or not they want to remotely unlock the door, or one of the employees could go walk to the door and provide entrance.
Now, we mentioned, we mentioned local law enforcement earlier, what, what is your emergency notification protocol for local law enforcement?
So it's really custom per user, but typically, standard operational procedure is if an intrusion alarm or a panic alarm is detected or present, it automatically goes to a monitoring center, which would immediately dispatch police, dispatch traffic.
I'm going to skip a couple, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If there is, let's say, layers of security, like you mentioned, with the camera, and we don't have somebody breaking into the building, but we have somebody approaching the building, that operator can actually hopefully deter that person from continuing forward. If that person is deterred and leaves the site, we won't dispatch police. If they continue towards the site, when they continue to break in and enter, now we have what's called a verified alarm, an alarm with video, with immediate moves to the top of the dispatch, and it gets a quicker dispatch than just the simple alarm signal.
Now, I'm going to skip some of the internal things that are for the benefit of the company. The last thing I want to focus on in this slide is the focus on training and accessibility. Can you speak a little bit about that and how you share information?
Absolutely, so all of our systems are qualified, which means anybody from anywhere with a proper security credentials can enter, which means it's very easy for us to do, like, a Google Meet training for multiple stakeholders and multiple users, and those people can be in any state, in any country while doing that training.
All right, next one, I'm sorry.
We do an end-to-end, daily user training, and then we also state it further, and we help the operator get trained on writing reports, writing audit logs, when there is an intrusion, there is a specific protocol that has to happen to deliver the video and all the other evidence, basically. So we actually give them a digital training guide, step-by-step, how do you export a visual alarm in the case of intrusion. So we kind of think about all the possibilities that could happen, and we create training guides with video, step-by-step, to deliver to the client.
All right, next slide, please.
That's something I can actually deliver to you in some of our examples of the video training.
All right, next slide, please, it's just a polls.
Okay, so this is the old one, again, honestly, the poll doesn't really apply here.
Okay, all right, well, then let's move on. Wireless infrastructure and deterrent?
Deterring, you said?
Wireless infrastructure and deterrent.
Okay, thank you. Again, the wireless infrastructure doesn't necessarily apply, but the deterrent does. So are we going to be detecting a human or a vehicle in an area of interest at a specified time, typically outside of operating hours? We will trigger a siren and a strobe to go off, typically scurrying that person, notifying them that this neighbor's there and also telling them that they're being reported.
Now, when I hear, when I hear strobe as a neighbor, I think you're going to wake me up at 3:00 in the morning, speak to that, please? The volume of the strobe?
So we can certainly, the strobes are all adjustable, but something that we have to do in the field is determine, you know, what the, what the balance is between scurrying the criminals and also becoming a nuisance. But the good thing is, our system is not going to have false positives, because it's going to be triggered by just any motion.
But you have the capacity to modulate that, so it becomes more of a deterrent than an announcement?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, and you can even turn the speaker off altogether and have just a red, blue, green light, so, you know, that in the middle of the night, that bright light is going to be a deterrent without having any sound intrusion.
All right, next slide, please, we're almost through. Thermal perimeter detection, I think you referenced it generally before, but could you speak about that?
Yes, so this is a, a, a tier two, so this would be, if needed, this is going to be a system that could detect perimeter, the entire fence perimeter, some clients have needed it, some do not, but if you needed the entire fence covered in this black at night, zero lighting, we can do thermal detection entirely accident, and would tell the police within, you know, of all that's known, if there's a person creeping around the perimeter fence and affecting the client and future.
All right.
I don't believe that we need it in this scenario.
All right, let's, let's move on to the next one, please. This is smart tracking and hand-tilt zoom, and I saw a drawing on how this impacts the property, but could you describe this, please?
Yes, so the smart tracking uses the intelligence in the camera to reference and point out what it considers to be a threat, so a person, when it detects a person, it will actually tell a hand-tilt zoom camera, which is a mobile moving camera, to follow that person or vehicle around the property, around the site, so that you can zoom in, even a very near identifiable image, or even follow a car, and zoom in, you know, like...
Your next slide, please. Now, this is color cameras, gate and asset protection.
Yes, so this is, uh, this is a, I've run over, but it's just backing down, we won't talk about...
Yeah, I, okay, I, I thought we had one with our site, was that on the other slides? Okay, all right, so unfortunately, the presentation, I guess the Wi-Fi didn't get, didn't come through, but could you describe to the board, please, and the audience, the impact, go back to the other, that other slide? By virtue of having the cameras and the gates and the asset protection, how does it all work together as part of your security plan?
So all the systems are fully integrated, they all talk to each other, so when a gate's open, it triggers the camera to record and store that information, when the alarm goes off, it triggers the video to detect the situation. What that all means is anytime there's a threat, you have all the video and evidence fitting in your hands the second that it happens, which allows for the quickest response time, and the other reason, I can give access to the desire of all of the video and all of the speakers to the local jurisdiction, if they want to have instant access to what's going on in the site in the event of a breach.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions, thank you. There'll be other questions perhaps by other, other attorneys?
I have no questions to this, so...
Sir, can you hear me?
Uh, it's just not good.
All right, my name is Jeffrey Downs, an attorney for some of the residents.
I'll say it.
I'm impressed by your security, protect the property of the person hiring you, but how does that protect the neighbors around them?
Well, it protects them because if somebody gets the idea that this is a soft target, it's something that's accessible, they'll find out immediately, it's the first time they try, and if they try to reach the site, they will be dispatched on, and there will be a response. So I think, you know, one or two times, it's a critical news stop, and if you try and they keep failing, I think they're going to stop showing up. For me, if they go somewhere else, it's a lot of input, and it bothers the other community, but this one is going to actually help them.
But if they stop showing up, then there's no reason for you into the future for your company, correct?
No, because they can only come back, so it doesn't always work. And I tried, and I don't have, if you stay up to work, they go in and they get you down for it.
All right, so you mentioned some training guides that you can send to High Blend LLC. What training guides do you provide them as to how to protect when an intruder leaves their property to go to a neighborhood cross?
I mean, I would be the first to ever get that, but I would suggest that if there is concern, that those properties will get to some sort of surveillance or perimeter protection.
Yeah, call him.
We can certainly implement a master station to protect that, it's the local neighborhood land and alarm detector, but I don't know if that would be more of a nuisance and a help, but it would be very simple to trigger any text to the surrounding neighbors anytime an alarm is triggered.
Does High Blend LLC discuss that they're going to pay for that protection of the neighbors?
We haven't got into that depth of discussion, but I know if they want to do what they have to do to be friendly neighbors, and we welcome them to help out, not just their own business, but the community around them.
What is the reasons that your company is hired for?
What is the reason?
Yeah.
Well, besides our credentials and our experience in this industry, we are a requirement in the state to be able to hold that business, so I'm sure Mr. Randall has interviewed more than just me to determine who he would like to work with, and I think he was impressed by how many of these sites he's done, and our willingness to be flexible and give it up on client.
Why do you think it's a requirement of the state for them to have security of this nature?
Uh, I think it's a, it's a new industry that is still highly regulated, federally not legal, so I think there needed to be barriers to entry, as well as they believe that this could draw the specific client out, there's no real evidence of that truly happening, but I think they're just being careful.
When you say there's no true evidence of that happening, what do you base that conclusion on?
Uh, just specifically my experience working with my clients.
And how many cannabis clients do you have, cannabis growing clients?
So I've worked with, so New York State is brand new, so there's, there's limited, I've worked with 20 clients in New York State, 10 of them are building in construction right now, three of them are operational, and I've worked with another seven between Pennsylvania, Colorado, and Florida.
So you would agree that the neighboring locations, whether residences or otherwise, the effect of this is still unknown?
Um, I would say, I think, I'm not the expert to have that answered, but I would say there's, there's a lot of studies done in Colorado and Washington State for almost a decade and not more, so I, I qualify to answer that question.
All right, when you say a lot of studies done, are you referring to any specific study?
No, nothing.
And nothing that you can identify for us tonight?
Uh, no, but I could certainly follow up with that.
All right, well, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Brode, I know it's, it's getting late, and there's a lot of people that want to be heard tonight, is it possible to take some of the public tonight out of turn, since we all have to come back next, next month anyway?
I don't, I, you okay with that, right? Taking some of the public out of turn? Yeah, I would.
We've done with security now?
Uh, I don't think Mr. Prenti had any questions, then Mr. Downs asked his questions. So, yeah, I would, the only, I want to just follow up on Mr. Downs' question, I will make a request for any of the studies that the gentleman referenced and make them part of a record if we come back, expect to come back next month. But otherwise, I have no objection to go out of turn so as to allow the residents to have an opportunity to speak.
My only concern is I think the public has to hear the entire presentation so they know what they want to comment on.
We're actually pretty close to being done, I only had maybe another 10 minutes.
You know, they may hear things afterward and then they wish they had a chance to talk about them. I think our normal procedure is for the public to hear the presentation.
I'm really close to being done. Yeah, I just have some cleanup with Mr.
We're not going past 11 o'clock.
I have cleanup with Mr. Randolph, maybe 10, maybe five minutes, 10 minutes at the most, and then we're done.
Okay, just to establish for the record, you've heard the security expert, you've heard the odor mitigation expert, if you were approved, would you be hiring, not necessarily hiring them, but would be utilizing technologies similar to what we have shown the board and the audience?
Without a doubt.
Mr. Prenti asked a couple of really good questions, many good questions, but a couple particularly to Mr. Kyle, what specifically, what type, could you describe the agriculture and the manufacturing and the interaction, and what type of products would be manufactured and what the processing procedure is like?
Yeah, I mean, they definitely go hand in hand, you have to grow it in order to manufacture it. So that's just a seamless, when we grow it and we harvest it, we bring it over to manufacturing, then we're making specific products.
Now, but can you give a list of the type you're considering?
Of the products, absolutely. On the onset, we'd be looking at doing oils, to the gentleman's point a while ago, that oils is what goes inside of pentups, so vape, it's not technically classified as vape, but that's what goes inside of that, and then anything from hash, the shatter, it's just different ways of manipulating the plant through manufacturing. So that's something from a huge press to get oils out of the plant. You can do anything from like a CO2 extraction in order to get additional method of the plant in order to make, you know, other products.
Now, the standard operating procedures that you would utilize would have to be approved by the Cannabis Regulatory Commission, correct?
100%.
But I think there was a question that was asked by Mr. Prenti or Mr. Kyle about whether any type of dangerous modalities are used, I think that's very important to the residents. What type, and I'm not a scientist, but what type of modalities are used, and is there anything that could pose a danger of explosion, I'm sure people are worried about those kinds of things?
I mean, from the manufacturing perspective, it's fairly limited. On the onset, when we were to start operations, we're going to do it on a lower scale. I did mention edibles earlier, that would be the plan, but on a lower scale, we're using, really just using pressurized presses to get the oils out of the plant, and then using like a CO2 extraction. So, I mean, from an explosion perspective, which has a harsh, you know, verbiage on it, but that would be, you know, CO2, that's anything that's inside of a, you know, medical grade facility.
Now, the chairman asked a question that I, or one of the members, I apologize if it was one of the other members, about the disposal of the product from the odor mitigation, which leads to frankly a larger question, and that is disposal of product generally. And could you speak to both questions, your general disposal protocol, and also the specific question that was raised?
Absolutely. So to answer the specific question that was raised, again, it just depends on the size of the canopy space that we have, for this initial one for 20, 25, 100 square feet, the disposal of the carbon would be roughly about a month to two months, that would be picked up by the vendor that we actually contract with, and they will properly dispose of it according to federal and state guidelines.
And there was a discussion about the amount of employees, the micro license, I think, and I think I know, requires you not to have more than 20 employees, is that correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct. It's actually 10, to be specific, inside of a cultivation, and then it's 10 with manufacturing.
Thank you for correcting me.
So 20 collectively.
20 total. And that's exactly, that's exactly the license you're applying for?
That's the license that we've been conditionally approved for through the CRC, which is the federal or the state regulated committee.
Okay, and you would not be allowed to go beyond that based on that license?
Without getting penalized, absolutely, yeah.
And there was a reference by Mr. Kyle about 25% commitment, could you tell the board what your commitment would be with respect to hiring local residents?
Yeah, absolutely. So what Mr. Kyle mentioned regards to us being an impact zone business, so we've been conditionally approved, as mentioned several times, by the CRC, not only for cultivation, but we've also been approved from an impact zone business. So that's making sure that we're putting in place the proper rigor in order to hire individuals that are directly affected by what the CRC in the state of New Jersey has classified as an impact business, or impact zone, I'm sorry, and those are communities that have been marginalized before in the past and have records from, you know, just particular cannabis or anything else.
And you're aware of Rowan University's cannabis protocols or programs, would you tell the board what your plans are to work with Rowan University?
Yes, absolutely, we, not just Rowan, but other state universities as well, because this will continue to increase across, you know, not only the New Jersey, but the state. Our plan would be to implement a learning program to bring in those individuals that are in those specific programs, to give them the real life experience to get into this, you know, booming market that's going to eventually be international.
All right, I don't have any further questions, I said five or 10, thank you.
I've got two questions. Is acid used in many of the procedures?
Uh, yes, it is, in cultivation, there's acid, it's controlled. Oh, I'd have to defer that to an expert, it's not.
That's mine, second question. Who has access to the vault so it's safe?
Uh, who has access to the vault, so that would only be myself as the CEO, that would be the head of plant sciences, who is in charge of all of the cultivation aspect and manufacturing aspect of the facility, and then just the direct report to underneath those individuals.
You're not going to be there every day.
I'm sorry?
You're not going to be there every day, are you?
I plan to be there every day when we actually initially start the business, absolutely, I'm 100% involved.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
How many plants are there?
How many plants? So that's a fun question, because it just depends on how you really decide to grow. Initially, we're looking at like 2,500 square foot, we could easily get in about 400 plants per each cycle, so you're looking, you know, for cultivation, for the flower aspect and vegetation. Collectively, according to the micro business license for the CRC, you're not allowed to have 1,000 plants at one time.
I think we're going to probably.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Just a couple of quick, just a couple of quick questions, because I know we want to get to the other.
Sure.
Sir, just a couple of quick questions, you had, you said earlier when you testified you did a lot of research, right? Due diligence, stress that, right?
Absolutely, yes.
You did a great deal of research.
Yes.
Did you research how this facility might impact the property values for people in the community?
I'm not the expert, just speak on real estate valuation.
Okay, then we could, you did not research that.
I'm not the expert, so the answer would be yes.
Okay, that's all I have then, thank you.
You want to hear from our engineer, or you want to?
Does this go to the, okay. Raise the public portion now, we're going to the public portion now.
Okay, I'll make an objection, I have several questions for the.
I think you should finish.
I think, okay, shoot, these are, these are our time.
You can hire an expert for property valuation, a broker, just like you hired a security expert and a smell mitigation expert, correct?
That's absolutely correct, yes.
Why didn't you do that?
I did not do that because the initial bifurcated point of this application was to get the use variance approval first, because I'm actually doing this all self-funded, I have my own, you know, job outside of this, I don't have additional funds in order to do that at this point, because it's technically not mandatory until we get into the next stage, when we go into the environmental study, we go into the impact of the surrounding community, on top of a lot of other, you know, testing procedures, when we bring in the construction engineer and real estate.
I'm going to have to disagree with you, it's part of the negative criteria for use variance, that's for the board. How many facilities of cannabis grow do you own at present?
I do own nothing at all.
Nothing, so what is your experience with all the stuff that you indicated as to how you're going to run this plant?
So, could you be a little bit more specific?
What are you garnering your experience on how to run cannabis plant with up to 1,000 plants in these people's backyards? What experience do we rely on to be confident?
So we rely upon the plant science expert that I would be hiring, and then also in regards of just the business acumen that I have, in regards of, you know, their current and past experiences, in running an actual functioning business that not only meets everything that it needs to meet from, you know, any particular vendors, investors, or what have you, that's my acumen in regards of business aspect of it. We hire other individuals, I can't obviously do security on my own, so that's why we're bringing the experts in order to do that. Surround yourself with not only a strong team, but a strong team that's going to support the community around you as well.
Your employees, have you hired your employees?
I have not hired any employees at this moment, correct?
What is the criteria for the employees you're going to hire?
The criteria? So it's kind of taking a little bit different approach, because we're going to, as mentioned in regards to the impact zone, we have to hire 25% of the surrounding community, so it just really depends, and I'll tell you how I typically hire individuals now in my current business, I hire people based upon their attitude and also upon their effort to be able to work, because everything else can be taught. If you come in with an open mind in any business that you're in, you can be taught everything else. So I've hired the most successful people in our company because of the way that we do that, and by company, I don't mean High Blend, I mean where I currently work now, I've hired the most successful people in our business by taking that approach, and that's what I plan to implement as well with this business.
But you can't teach these.
I'm sorry?
You can't teach these employees, correct? Because you don't have the experience.
I can teach the employees in regards to a business aspect, and then again, we hire the professionals to teach those individuals.
All right, what is your current business?
I'm sorry?
What is your current business?
So I lead up marketing that I mentioned for a large pharmaceutical company in North America, so that's anything from their video production, that's managing multi-millions of dollars successfully and bringing in, you know, consistent revenue.
Is there any water issues that you've discussed with any of your experts, any water runoff, any infiltration into any surrounding wells, has that been looked into?
Yeah, so it's briefly been looked into, again, because it's a use variance, we'll get into the more specifics on the other portion of the application, but what we'd be doing in regards of water would be, would be obviously drilling additional wells, doesn't have an effect to the surrounding community in regards of that, but then we'll be, we'll be hiring and bringing in the individuals that can speak to that more specifically in the formal site plan.
Okay, and specifically as to how it affects your neighbors?
Absolutely.
You don't know that answer tonight, correct?
I'm sorry?
You don't know the answer as to how it affects your neighboring property?
I do not, because we're not at that point yet, yes.
Okay, well, I will disagree that you're not at that point, but I appreciate your talking.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I will, to the point of the audience, you know, we'll reserve our rights to perhaps come back, but certainly want to hear from the audience, thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor and a second gentleman up the public. All of these, I propose to let, just saying there's a three minute limit time with us.
I'll speak quickly. Leah Vasallo.
Raise your right hand, please.
I'm sorry.
Tell the truth about the test, please, yes.
Yes.
Name and address.
Leah Vasallo, 560 Delsey Drive, Malaga. I just wanted to say quickly that I feel sorry for everyone who came here tonight, both from the board and the audience, because we've all just wasted a great number of hours, as far as I'm concerned. To go briefly to the applicant, there's, the positive prong for a use variance is, in my opinion, not even close to being met, it's obviously not an inherently beneficial use. By their own report that they submitted, uses that may be attractive because they provide job services, products, and recreation are usually not deemed themselves inherently beneficial, it's just some speculation about a possible future use that they want to call inherently beneficial now. Secondly, they say, or if that doesn't work, the site's particularly suited because this is essentially an agricultural use, but since agricultural uses are permitted throughout the entire township, that doesn't make that site particularly suitable. Finally, they say, well, there's also an undue hardship because this is a split zone site, and I want to talk about that just very briefly, it's not a split zone site, it's an RA site, and the fact that part of it is under Q Farm for tax assessment does not make it a split zone site. So you have an argument for a variance which doesn't even come close to meeting any prong that's required, we've talked a lot about a million things that will never come into play, but the actual prong that needs to be proven, there's nothing substantive there that's been offered at all. And I'm sad to say that everyone here, I assume will take it as a victory if you vote not to approve the variance, but the bigger concern is, it shouldn't be here for a variance to begin with, because the township in 2021 had an opportunity to restrict marijuana uses within the township, and they chose not to do it for classes one through four, which this would fall under, they chose not to restrict that, that cannot be revisited for five years, so it cannot be changed. Secondly, the year before that, they passed an ordinance, they didn't just change the definition of agricultural uses, they actually passed a separate ordinance, 253-96.1, that is permitted uses throughout every zone in the township that's not in the pinlands, which would include this one, and it says, "The following uses shall be permitted in all the districts established under Article 10, Section 253-86, that are located outside of the pinlands area," and I'm reading the whole thing, "agricultural uses." Agricultural use shall mean the use of the premises for common farm site activities, including but not limited to production, harvesting, storage, grading, packaging, processing, and the wholesale and retail marketing of crops, plants, animals, and other related commodities, and the use and application of techniques and methods of soil preparation and management, fertilization, weed, disease and pest control, disposal of farm waste, irrigation, drainage, and water management, and grazing. So unless you're telling me that marijuana is not a plant, this is a permitted use, and I'm sorry to say that, and I wish it wasn't, and it should be addressed by the township committee, because this is not the first time it has come up. It came up a month ago with the last application for a pot factory that was to be located within, I believe it was 600 feet of Delsey and 1,000 feet of Ritter School. And the interesting thing for that is it did not even go before the zoning board, it went directly to the township committee. How do you have, and expect this to be one of a whole slew of them, because this is applicable to anywhere in the township that's not in the pinlands, that's the underlying issue that needs to be addressed. You can address it, you're the zoning board, but the people who actually make the ordinances and have allowed this to happen, because they're anxious to get revenue, with complete disregard to how it affects the people around these facilities, they can have the best security system in the world, they may or may not control their odor, we don't have an odor ordinance to enforce anything after the fact, but it doesn't matter, because it still affects the people who live there, it affects their property value, it affects their quality of life, and I don't believe the zoning board is in a position to do anything to help them, unfortunately.
Thank you, Lynn.
I do. Harry Kennedy, 1578 Frye's Mill Road. Mr. Magizo and I shared careers along the way in parallel ways, and along the way, I had a very good frenemy by the name of John Mayer, who was the freeholder director of Gloucester County, and he once gave me an immutable rule, and that is, the experts I hire, the hired guns I hire, usually shoot in the direction I point them, and that is always the case, never changes, the hired gun always shoots in the direction of the person that hires them. And the important thing to remember tonight is this, the people sitting on this board, actually, John, you've been there for over 30 years, all right, the experience you have on the zoning board, I could take that entire township committee and multiply their years by two, and they wouldn't have the experience that you have in terms of administering zoning laws or dealing with the public. It's a very unfortunate situation, and Leah talked about it. What you heard tonight from the experts was very clear, for those of you that read between the lines, we don't really give a crap what you do tonight, because we'll be back anyway, because there's a four-pronged permitted use, basically in what that ordinance says that was passed 0621, to say that it could be put in any area of the township. Because there's a four-pronged permitted use, basically, in what that ordinance says that was passed 0621, to say that it could be put in any area of the township in conjunction with 0721, which went immediately after it, which allowed agricultural zones. Now, there's about to be a review, a master plan review. That might be the stupidest, worst-written, dumbest ordinance in the history of Franklin Township. It doesn't restrict a pot factory from going next to that wonderful Catholic school that's on the corner of Catawba and Main Road. It doesn't restrict it from going next to Ritter School. It doesn't restrict it from going near Delsey. It's a shame that the experience and intelligence, the planning, and the zoning board weren't utilized by the township committee. It was poorly written and poorly done. Not your fault, not your responsibility. I understand that. But I'm going to ask all of you a simple question, and I've known you all for a long time. Some of your fathers coached me in baseball when I was a kid. Some of you were coached by me when you were a kid. Some of you are some of the best people I've seen, working with dogs, working to bring things to the township. You're the best board in the township, by and large, all right? Would any one of you, knowing what that stupid ordinance says, want a pot factory next to you? I think the answer is no. Thank you, and try to make a decision based that way.
I live on 765 South Blue Bell Road. Do you need anything, other information? Okay. Daisy Robles. Correct. So they don't have to address it now, but I know they're supposed, the planner is supposed to look into how it affects the neighborhood. They talk about drilling wells. What happens with that is, the water becomes less drinkable for the rest of the community if they do that. We have to go pay people now to drill deeper for us. And that costs thousands of dollars. So I don't think they took any consideration to any of us. And they made that pretty clear in some of the stuff that they said tonight. But I lost my train of thought, sorry. I had my notes.
Take your time.
When they clean their materials, their equipment, where is that runoff water going to go into? What is their procedures for cleaning their equipment? Because they have to clean their equipment if they're doing edibles or whatever is going to be consumed. Where is all that wastewater going to? They had a hard time telling you where the waste was going to go from the cartridges or whatever you want to call them, from the machines that are going to clean the air so we're not getting that smell. So where is all that waste going to? Is it going back into the ground, back into the well water? So this is going to make it more difficult for the community to have drinkable water if we allow them to do this? And that's all I wanted to say about that.
All right. Thank you very much. Raise your hand, please. You sure to tell the truth about the test flight? You ready to give?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Richard Trasferini, 825 South Blue Bell Road, Finsland, New Jersey. I live on the corner of Blue Bell Road and Catawba Avenue. I've lived there all my life, 83 years. I've been, I also own two lots on Catawba Avenue, Block 7002, Lot 1302, and Lot 1304. I still enjoy gardening and growing and caring for my fruit trees. We don't need a facility like this in our peaceful and quiet neighborhood. I strongly oppose on granting Mr. Privatera a variance for this facility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Yes.
Raise your hand, please. You sure to tell the truth about the test flight?
I do.
Name and address.
Debbie Morton, 1745 Harding Highway. I'm coming today out of concern, I'm not right near the neighbors that are going to be affected by this, but I am close by. My concern is that even with regulated pesticides being used, whether they're indoors or they're exterior pesticides being used, there are long-term effects that impact people. I have had firsthand experience in my family of people who have gotten diseases like Parkinson's because of exposure to pesticides. We do not yet know what the cultivation and manufacturing of indoor cannabis is going to be doing long-term to any of us, whether it is in the wastewater residue that is going to be happening. We do know that there are a lot of knowledge gaps. I even looked up that in the National Fire Prevention Association Journal, that the report, there was a report on the growing commercial marijuana industry. And the reason they were reporting on it is because they were trying to find out how public agencies are battling to ensure that facilitators are safe, not only for the employees, but for the firefighters who may have to be addressed as well as the public. So these are things that we are still trying to figure out. I have no, I have no concerns or no surprise that Mr. Privatera is interested in selling his property to do something like this. Because in his own words on his LinkedIn profile, he is an experienced professional within the pharmaceutical industry. So he knows who to reach out to and contact to try and buy a piece of property and flip it. And to try and have himself say that he bought this for personal use and then be able to do a sale or be able to do commercial projects on that. I believe the intent was to try and bring in a pharmaceutical industry like cannabis cultivation there. We also know that because of the fact that there is a residence on the property, that means there are more than 10 people that are employees in cultivation and 10 in manufacturing. We have people that are going to be working administration. We have people that are going to be working in the security. We have people that are going to be living in that house. Because if they're saying the purpose of having someone live in that house is to ensure 24/7 there is somebody on that property, it means actually there's going to be more than one person living in that house to do this. Because otherwise, that person's not going to be able to leave their house to go out to dinner or do any of these kinds of things. So there's more people than just the 20 that they're saying that are going to be in there. We talked about the 99.9% accuracy or odor elimination that they have. I'd be interested in knowing over what timeframe and what was the sample size that they came up with that statistic. Because over time, any kind of filtration system does diminish in the quality in what they are doing. And the neighbors that are going to be right there are going to have problems, not only with that, but whether or not they turn down the sound of the sirens, they're going to have those bright lights that are being admitted. And I think this is something that is not what Franklin Township stands for. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Armin Capafary. I do. Armin Capafary, 615 South Blue Bell Road. I built my home in 1985, so I've been there since then, and had a lot of family on the street too over the years, Faravellas. Anyway, the guard stations, I don't know if you can answer this question, are they going to be manned 24/7?
Can I answer? Yeah, it's actually regulated by the CRC that we have to have 24-hour security on the property.
Okay, so won't they be called before the police are called then?
So they'll be notified as well. It's simultaneously. So they'll get notified on the property if they're not already detecting it from the cameras before it gets notified. And then in, again, runs on.
You should probably go up to the mic because of the record. I'm sorry, sorry. It's okay.
As far as calling the police, the guards? Right, right. So the guards will be notified initially because they're consistently monitoring their security systems. So they'll be notified immediately just by looking at it. And then automatically, our guard room, with the redundancies from the security company, what Casey mentioned, is that that redundancy is the security officer, the security system, and then getting notified, the local authorities.
And are they armed?
They are. It's required by the CRC. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, one of my concerns, if there is somebody that, you know, tries to break into this facility, they're not going to leave through the front entrance. They're going to be cutting through my yard. One of my other concerns is the retaining pond is almost going to be in my backyard. I'm pretty close to where that retaining pond is. So I'm concerned about mosquitoes. What if we get rains like we've had the last few days? You know, is that going to overflow and go onto my property and flood my place? I mean, I don't know. Nobody really talked about the generator noise too much, I don't believe. But that would be another concern. And is anybody going to follow up? Supposedly, there's going to be employees living in that home. Now, originally, that house was supposed to be torn down, but they're seeking a variance to be able to keep that home. So is somebody from the township going to make sure that there's an employee living in that house and they're not renting it out? Who follows up on that, I wonder? Also, we've enjoyed the wildlife, you know, in that area for years. I mean, it's a perk, yeah, I mean, but it would be missed, you know, because I'm sure that the deer aren't going to be running through there and whatnot. But the only other thing, I would hope that, you know, the board would take this into consideration, would you want something like this in your backyard? You know, I would, I would think not. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Tricia Trasferini, Sarad, 1718 Catawba Avenue. Good evening, Chairman and Board members. I'm not here with any fancy facts like these folks, but I'm here as a resident who lived on Catawba Avenue for over 51 years. As a member of the Trasferini family, I'm a fourth-generation resident of this township. The Trasferinis settled in Franklin Township over 100 years ago and farmed over 150 acres of land. At one point in my family's farming career, we were the largest grower of sweet potatoes in the area. My great-grandparents, grandparents, and then my dad and his three brothers all tilled the land, planted and raised crops here. It was back-breaking work and the true definition of farming. Over the years, those sweet potatoes supported five families. I loved growing up here and wanted my children to be raised here and to be able to live next door to their grandparents, which they do. Over the last few years, we've had many new families buy homes in the area of South Blue Bell and Catawba. It's so nice to see all the kids outside playing ball, riding their bikes or scooters. With all due respect to Mr. Randolph, it is not your daughter that's riding their bikes. It's our children and grandchildren. Catawba, Catawba is a quiet residential street that will no longer exist if a grow facility is permitted to be built. Not one neighbor I've spoken to is in favor of this plan. My family and my neighbors on Catawba and Blue Bell enjoy the peacefulness of their properties. I enjoy sitting on my deck and having coffee in the morning, listening to the birds, roosters crowing, and the fresh air. We frequently have dinner on our deck. When my neighbors one door down have an evening fire pit, we smell the smoke. When my neighbors two doors down are smoking a pork roast, we also smell that. This facility is three doors down. I am indignant that someone from North Jersey, or anyone from that, for that matter, can be permitted to come into a neighborhood and disrupt many families' enjoyment of their homes. The definition of the word sanctuary is a place of refuge and protection. My home is my sanctuary. For most, the peace and quiet is the reason why they decided to purchase a home here in the first place, not to mention the great schools, low crime, and tight-knit community. There's nothing wrong with these grow facilities, but they need to be placed in an area where they will not disrupt the environment and neighbors. While I care about the value of my home being decreased, I am mostly fearful of our air and water being polluted, the pull on our water source, and the peaceful nights and quiet mornings being illuminated by bright lights and rattled by a generator that runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I don't want extra traffic that will bring strangers, which could then bring crime. I don't want this establishment two doors down from where my husband, children, and I have built our life that requires a 24-hour armed guard. I ask the board to imagine this going in their backyards and to deny this application. This application is about the almighty dollar and not about the benefits to this township or our residents. All the high-tech info is nice, but doesn't take into consideration any of these people. Thank you.
I own 1607 Catawba Avenue. Swearing? No, okay. Okay. A couple of things I want to bring up regarding the engineering aspect to this project. The generator building, I'd like to know how many generators are going to be in that building? And what size are they? 1,400 kW? What size are they?
Can we answer?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Will I go put, put some mics so it's on record?
Whoever's going to answer, Matthew's going to answer.
Well, it's okay. Whether it's one, four, we don't know.
I mean, it's specific to the. It will be specific to the grow lights that we have set up per each canopy. So it's going to, you know, it'll change based on how much power we need for each LED. LED, but they're LED lights, right? So they're very good with power. You know, they used about 10% of normal light bulbs, so it's not going to be much.
Okay. Well, the point I want to make is, that building will have intake louvers, and the noise will be heard outside of that building. You can't isolate that. Generators are loud. It will be heard through the neighborhood when they're running. I can guarantee it. But the biggest thing I haven't heard tonight was light pollution. I was a lighting designer for 30 years, and the site lighting, there has to be site lighting for a parking lot and for roadways. How much lighting will be on that site? And I think if this goes any further, there should be some lighting calculations done to show the spill of that lighting on our residential neighborhood.
If you get to the site plan level.
We will never, we will never have a dark sky again in that area. True. The light pollution coming off of this site doesn't belong near our homes. I don't want to look out my picture window and see all that light. And another thing about the generator building, is there a fire suppression system for those generators? Is there a fire pump on this site? There is no city water. So these are just things I want to, for the record, mention. And one last thing about that existing site. I was raised at that location. I grew up working on that existing farm. And that existing woods line that they call, that they're going to try to retain, that woods line is to hide and cover up chicken coop foundations and concrete pads and an existing pump station, a pump house. There's a lot of trash on that site that I thought one day would get cleaned up. The existing owner was required to remove dilapidated chicken coops only to make them safe, so a rafter wouldn't fall on somebody. But that woods line is not natural. I mean, it's natural because there are naturally grown trees, but that is hiding existing debris. Thank you.
Jason Brant. I do. Jason Brant, 688 Rosemont Avenue, Newfield, New Jersey. I just wanted to touch on some of the planning aspects of the application this evening. And I'm sure Mr. Shoddy would have got to this, I didn't want to take the wind out of his sails. But the CRC, when they drafted their original regulations, I mean, anticipated that these situations would arise. And they specifically noted within those regulations that these type of uses, class one through class four uses, would only be permitted within industrial zones. Class five and class six uses, which are the retail sale of cannabis, would be permitted in commercial and retail zones. When the township chose to prohibit class five and class six uses within the township and chose to permit class one through class four, they did so with the intent that those uses would only be permitted in appropriate locations. And it specifically references the location of those uses to be industrial. So some of the testimony that the applicant has provided this evening is extremely misleading and unfactual, that somehow the municipality had intended to permit these type of facilities to be built anywhere within the township. If you read 0621, it specifically states that these uses would be permitted only in industrial zones, not in residential agricultural zones. And I'll ask a question to Mr. Shoddy and Mr. Borelli. The state could have at any point amended the definition of agriculture within the municipal land use law, correct?
Municipal land use law, they could have, yes.
Right. And we're here this evening, you know, under the provisions of the municipal land use law. So as of tonight, this evening, does the definition of agriculture include cannabis cultivation and manufacturing? cultivation and manufacturing?
I don't think there's been an amendment to that effect.
So therefore, cannabis manufacturing, cannabis cultivation is not to be considered an agricultural use for the purposes of the administration of the municipal land use law. Is that an accurate statement?
I mean, they haven't specifically adopted any change to the law. They still go back to the local ordinances. The agricultural definition on a local level hasn't taken cannabis into consideration, so still not...
So there's no definition existing that would include cannabis cultivation or manufacturing under the guise of agriculture, correct?
Specifically.
Right. Those are my only comments. Thank you.
Anyone else want to be heard?
As everybody knows, Franklin Township covers Buena...
A photo actually.
No, Philip Travis, 81 Berry Drive. It covers all of Franklin Township, Buena, Newfield, and North Vineland. Now, if there's a perp, someone in it, perp, yeah, excuse me. If there's somebody there that's giving them a problem, all right, how long do you think it's going to take for Franklin Township Police to arrive at the scene if they're there? If it takes about 15 minutes or longer. Did you answer that? No answer, all right.
Christine Natali, 1218 Catawba Avenue. So I've heard all their things about how they're going to protect their property, nothing about how they're protecting our property. I've seen people that get hired to work at these facilities. My cousin is one of them, and I will tell you that he is not welcome to my house because he's a hood man, okay? And second, all of you, you have a daughter, a niece, a granddaughter, would you pay thousands of dollars to send her to a school, a private school that has a pot place at the end of the road?
No.
No, you wouldn't.
The board is here, it's not, we're not your enemy.
I get you, but you need to vote correctly.
My name is Tracy Ramos. My address is 751 Blue Bell Road. Good evening, Board members and neighbors. I live on Blue Bell Road, and the back of my property touches the property in question at 1654 Catawba Avenue. My husband and I have worked hard and sacrificed for the last 18 years in hopes of buying our dream home where we can safely raise our children. That dream came true five years ago, and we have spent so much time and money over the last five years creating the farm we have always dreamed of. We absolutely love our home, our farm, and the neighborhood we live in. Unfortunately, this variance could quickly kill all that we have come to love and enjoy. When my husband and I first heard of this marijuana company trying to open their business right behind our home, my husband's first response was that we have to hurry up and move. We have to sell right away. I proposed to him that we research the situation first, before getting all worked up about it. After researching countless news reports from states like California, Oregon, and Florida where marijuana has been legal for a few years or more, the information was so much worse than my husband was even imagining. Neighbors complaining about horrific and noxious odors that compare to that of a skunk, and even with filtration systems. Green slime from fertilizer runoff, noise from generators and fans that run 24/7, bright lights that can be seen all night long, neighbors' wells being dried up, local creeks being dried up, dead fish in neighboring ponds, dead trees on neighboring properties, lowering of property values, neighbors that can't sell because buyers are turned off by the smell, an influx of traffic, the attraction of undesirable people looking to steal from these companies, and companies deceitfully proposing one building for their operation and very rapidly doubling and even tripling their operations, which, as you might expect, only exacerbates these issues I have mentioned. In eight hours of research, I couldn't even get through all the reports, and oddly enough, the complaints weren't just from neighbors, but from mayors that were being bombarded with complaints, and they were powerless to do anything for the residents because marijuana industry is regulated by the state. City officials have no power to do anything when these horrific situations arise. Lawsuits are not being filed just by neighbors, but also by the municipalities, and I was so dumbfounded by this. As a real estate agent for the last 18 years, I know the commercial real estate market's not doing well right now. There are 91 commercial properties in Gloucester County alone that are for sale right now. Surely, there are better-suited properties for this type of operation that are already zoned commercial or industrial. Isn't that why we have zoning regulations, to protect the residents from these horrendous situations? Let's learn from the mistakes of these other municipalities. Let's force these companies into commercial industrial spaces away from residents. I ask the board members to put yourselves in our shoes. Would you want this company moving in to your, right next to your home, and would you want to have to worry about your children or grandchildren playing in the back of your yard? Because I am incredibly concerned about the safety of my children. The woods sitting right into the back of my property is a perfect spot for these criminals to hide out in, and armed guards really in shooting distance of my property. I'm concerned for the safety of my children as well as the neighbors. So I ask you, please, say no to this variance.
You sure to tell truth about the testimony you're going to give?
I do.
Name and address.
Barbara Hal Bern Harding Highway. My questions have to do with environmental issues, namely this supposed so-called generator. I spoke to the NGDEP this afternoon, I spoke to the permitting department, and I asked the questions about this because it seemed really odd that this facility is going to be run 24/7 on what they're calling a generator. DEP says it's not a generator, it's a power plant. Basically, they said it would be unlikely that they would even issue such a permit. Has anyone from this group done their research when it comes to this facility running with a generator 24/7?
I'll answer that. The state will not entertain such discussions until we have local approvals.
Okay, so you don't know?
No, no, no. I said the state will not entertain such discussions until we have local approval, not that I don't know. There's a difference.
That sounds like a non-answer, but that's okay. Anyway, that is my biggest concern. What about this Visconti facility? Did they propose this situation with a power plant of their own? You guys saw that, right? That's something you approved, or was that the planning board?
No, it was approved. I don't think they have a generator.
Okay. Are there other facilities in the state that are proposing this type of situation that you're aware of?
The answer is a generator.
That they're going to run 24/7 with a generator, not a backup generator?
But no one ever mentioned 24/7 with a generator. We said that it would be 24-hour security. No one ever said 24 hours with a generator.
Your application states it in black and white. I think you better amend your application then. Yeah, my concern is air quality. I mean, I'm not concerned about the odor mitigation. I believe you that the carbon filter will work. I wear a carbon filter myself because I can't handle the perfume in this room. Makes me sick. But what also would make me sick is living near a fossil fuel generator that's going to emit fumes while it's running. You know, nobody's mentioned that. That's a health hazard. Do you want to be sucking in fumes from a generator 24/7 if you live nearby? To me, that would be the ultimate disruption of a property value, not the fact that there's a cannabis facility there that could be hidden by trees, the property's large, there's plenty of room to buffer those neighbors, they might never see a thing. I'm not concerned if it was next to me and it didn't have this generator, I wouldn't be concerned about stranger danger, I wouldn't be concerned about this, but I also don't live in a residential zone, I live in highway commercial. The other situation is wastewater. Now, I'm not sure about your facility and how the plants are going to be grown, but obviously you're going to use fertilizers, which are going to have nitrates and phosphates and other things. What's the situation with the wastewater from that?
The answer is, as the chairman is aware and the board's aware, that's part of the site plan.
Okay, so we don't know if there's going to be a groundwater impact? We don't know, do we know if there's an egypties permit that's going to happen for this facility, or is it going to be a county-approved septic system?
Your time's expired.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
You sure to tell truth about the testimony you're going to give?
Yes.
Name and address.
Ryan Chee, 735 South Blue Bell Road. So everybody can use the euphemism like "not in my backyard," but this is quite literally in my backyard. My property butts up to the tree line that the environmental plant I was talking about. I own some of those trees, and I can see straight through to this property, like the barriers talking about maybe on Catawba might exist. Not in my backyard. It's not there. I live there, I see it every day, it just doesn't happen. From the site plan perspective too, I have a drainage easement between my property and the one next to me. Right now, it's got like a foot of water in it because of all the rain we've had. Once you pull like all the asphalt and shit in, sorry.
Speak to the microphone.
I apologize. So once you put all the asphalt and impermeable surface in, where does all the water go? Like, he said it won't be built on slopes or anything, but it does gradually pitch towards my property to make use of that easement. And I'm not like super qualified or anything, but I guess to just kind of run it down. So you got Chris, right? He owns the property, but he's not filing for the variance, but he's also claiming the financial hardship, correct? And then the CEO doesn't want his daughter to see this, but it's okay to put in our backyards. And then the planner, who says it's particularly suitable because it's a field with trees. And then the expert who struggled to answer a bunch of questions. And then back to CEO, not to pick on you or anything, but this is his first and only attempt at this, so Franklin Township and my backyard is going to be the guinea pig. And again, not to pick on you, but it took you like 10 minutes to get that video up, but you're talking about all the high-tech systems he's got. So, no, it just doesn't instill too much confidence for this to be his first effort and to stick it again in my backyard. So.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It's not 11 o'clock yet, just one comment, one comment.
Coming up two or three times.
Talking about the security along the fence, if there's movement, it's going to activate the security system. How about the Williamson's? They drive tractors along there every day, that's their job, they work there with the alarm going to keep going off every 10 minutes. Thank you.
I'm Dave Williamson Jr., 1584 Catawba Avenue, and I own Newfield Nursery, which you're planning on building right next to me. We've been there for 50 years. All of these people here, all of these, all of these neighbors here have never came to me and my brother with a complaint. Here we are. It's nobleness to be there. Put it somewhere else. I don't know why the owner, why you didn't come to anybody, somebody? You did not come to me. I never met you in my life. I've never met you in my life. I'm sure Mr. Carsman might have bought it. Anybody would have bought it. This, voicemail to who?
To you, your business.
My parents are dead, dude, there's nobody in the house.
I've voicemails to your business.
No, you did not. No, you did not. We can talk outside if you like, don't matter to me. No, all I can say is, that has no business being in this neighborhood. We've been there for 50 years. I've never had a complaint from anybody.
Diane Levin, 719 South Blue Bell Road, right next to Ryan. And it's horrific what if this passes, it's horrific. You have a sister sitting back there from Alma. We spend $10,000 a year to send our daughter there. Who's going to send their children there now? We spend $16,000 a year in taxes. You're going to have a mass exodus on the people there. Who's going to want to move to this township? We moved from Sicklerville 18 years ago. We wanted to give our daughter a better life. We thought she'd take our home over, we'd buy a smaller property here, and we'd have a good, good time. This is horrific. You people possibly can't think this is right, and all of you should be ashamed of yourselves. It's horrific. We're good people, we work hard, all of us. We deserve to have good lives.
And now, a couple of the attorneys want to say a few things. Public portions closed. Did you want to say something? You were coming up? No. All right. I can wait till next meeting.
Yeah, the question was, were we finishing tonight, Mike and Mr. Chairman? Because I thought we were coming back next week. My client was waiting to give his two cents. We've also had not heard from Mr. Shadi's report also.
I mean, we want to do that tonight? We'll hear your report next week, okay?
Excellent. Thank you, Chairman and Board members. We, like you said, we did a report dated April 19, 2023, of which a lot of this information and questions in this report have been addressed, but I do want to touch on a couple of things. So one question I had is about the existing agricultural use. Is that to remain as part of this plan, or is that going to be removed if this cannabis gets permitted and constructed? Will the existing agricultural field remain?
Hold on one second. So the answer is, if there's no prohibition by the CRC of agricultural use, you know, active cultivation like that occurring on the property, the applicant's not opposed to agriculture continuing on that portion. Obviously, there's a pretty significant amount of land left over, probably about 12 acres that could be farmed?
Correct. We were talking about buffering and all those types of things. I wanted to know, you know, whether you're going to continue to farm it or not. I guess we'll see more as part of the site plan application goes on, but I think that's important. You can't have a cute farm and a micro business at the same place anyway.
You can't. It's, yeah, you're not allowed to have farmland assessment where a cannabis business is operating.
Okay. Number four in my report. So we're talking about this building, it's 20,000 square feet. We heard that 2,500 square feet was going to be cultivation, 2,500 square feet is going to be cannabis, and the other 15,000 square feet were going to be some processing or things along those lines. It doesn't really add up in my book. But anyway, so can this be converted from a micro license to a full license? Is that the intention, or can that happen?
Yes, it happens.
Not without approval by the CRC, plus it would have to go back to this board or the governing body. And by the way, I want to just bring, while I am up here, we, I agree with the first two speakers, Ms. Leia and Mr. Kennedy, that the governing body did in fact preempt this board, and we would be asking for an interpretation. We're here because the zoning officer told us we had to come here. But the answer to your question is, there would have to be CRC approval, and I believe that the resolution would be constricted to what we asked for. Any expansion would have to go either before the governing body or this body, depending on who had jurisdiction. So the answer is we couldn't do it unilaterally.
Even if you weren't proposing any other improvements to the site?
We cannot move...
Only what you're asking for.
I'm sorry?
If your only ability to 20,000 square foot and you want to use it otherwise, I don't know that...
You mean non-cannabis?
Additional cannabis above and beyond the micro license.
We would have, we would have to go to CRC approval.
Yeah, I agree. We need CRC approval. I don't know that we would say it.
So the license, the conditional license that was issued to High Blend is for 2,500 square feet of canopy. They don't regulate the size of the building that it's occurring in, only the amount of canopy space.
Understood.
Yeah. So obviously, if we get... So, obviously, if we get the site plan approval, we will provide detailed floor plans and elevations of the building.
But the specific answer is, we'd have to get CRC approval, and we'd have to get approval by whatever entity that gave us jurisdiction within this town.
Okay. I want to be sure that that's in fact true.
Well, we would make it part... If we got a resolution this evening, it would be... I believe it would run with the resolution as a condition.
Then it would only be for a micro license?
Correct. Yeah.
So, days of operation. I heard the... It was going to be nine to five. I didn't hear how many days of operation was proposed for this.
Five or seven?
It's seven days.
Weekend too. Fantastic.
Also, I want to go back, and I think it was Mr. Prant, if I said his name, if I got his name right, very articulate, and he made an excellent point. So, Franklin Township ordinance 06-21 does prohibit class five, as we heard a whole bunch of times. It doesn't though allow, as I think we heard testimony, that it can go anywhere four corners of the municipality. This particular use can only go in an industrial zone. That's what you were saying.
Read the second ordinance. Got to read them in conjunction.
I... Okay. And I did.
There's a big hole, and Mr. Kennedy was right, and the young Miss Leia was right. There was an enormous hole you could drive a truck through in the ordinance set up in this town.
I agree. They took this...
Absolute hole. That exposes the town, that exposes...
And only changed a portion of the state regulations.
It exposes the town...
And left the rest of the regulations in effect.
Under the telecom regulate, under the telecom case law, which is applicable here. It exposes the town. I believe, you can get two lawyers and a judge and get three different opinions. But I believe it exposes this town, without remedial action, to an unsuccessful, unhappy applicant could then say that the ordinance is so vague and was frankly not written in the most precise way, I'm trying to be nice, that the town could be exposed. A judge could disagree with me. Either of these two lawyers could disagree with me. But I think that exposure is there.
Right. So, we're in a...
We can't change it.
We're not in a split zone. We're in a residence agriculture zone. It's not a permitted use. They deserve to be here for this use variance this evening, in my opinion, as a planner. And I think that we've got ordinance 06-21 to further back that up. And I don't know that it's really site plan or whether it's use variance, but you know, our ordinance talks about prohibited uses in the township. And the applicant did talk about noxious or toxic fumes and smoke. And odor is always a big thing with these cannabis operations. But our ordinance also talks about noise and vibration from motors and other things, especially this generator. And also, one of the things that we didn't hear about is the contribution to the pollution of water. Specifically, the effluent from these fertilized plants. You know, I guess it gets recycled, but there's some concentrated form that leaves the site that'll have to go into our septic system and'll have to go into our groundler. That will certainly have to be addressed when we get through this whole site plan thing, when we talk about environmental impact statements. I have one other comment. Oh, we're talking about particularly well-suited. And I buy into some of those arguments about particularly well-suited. But is it suited from an infrastructure standpoint? We don't have public water. We don't have public sewer. And we obviously don't have sufficient electricity for the site. So, that would, you know, you could use that argument as not being particularly well-suited. But it's up to the board, you know, negative impact. Is there any substantial impact in neighboring properties? We heard the testimony by the planners and the applicant. You need to weigh that, obviously, when you make your decision. That's all I have.
But we're not making our decision tonight.
Whenever you make your decision.
Mike? We're continuing.
Well, that's what we had discussed, and it was mainly based upon the one gentleman who didn't get noticed. Now, you're quite going to testify or speak, or are you going to speak?
He was. I thought we were coming back next month, because that's what we had discussed at the beginning.
And we did agree, I mean, in fairness to Mr. Pranty, we did agree to that, so I don't object.
There was one... Did you want more time to come back next time? Did you want time to come back next? Do you still need more time?
Send it now. We all spoke.
It's up to you. If you feel you have enough information to...
We have a lot of information here tonight.
If anybody wants to do closing, and other attorneys want to make closings, they're welcome to as well. But I want to... You hear me? I'm sorry? You want to make any closing comments? Do we have time?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick arguments. We heard in cross-examination that there was no specific positive criteria and no analysis of the proper negative criteria. The applicant hired several professionals to provide testimony. Didn't provide any testimony as to the negative impact on the surrounding neighbors, which is essential in deciding this application. This is not a situation where you had a landowner that had to sell a property to save the proverbial farm. This is a guy who was an outsider, who bought this specifically to do this to these neighbors. These neighbors will buy this property, this applicant High Blend LLC. My clients don't object to their specific company or their product. They object to it in their backyard. The decision by the board, if it was granted, would be arbitrary and capricious. There's a substantial interest in the outcome of the variance from the residents, which we've heard from tonight. There's uniform disagreement that that variance should be granted, and we would just request that it would be denied.
Just 30 seconds.
I promise, I'm going to lay it out. I just want to add that this is a use variance application. The standard is a very difficult standard to meet, very high burden. The positive criteria, the negative criteria, as Mr. Down just pointed out, clearly has not been met. And with that, I submit to the board's experience on matters such as this. This is a commercial enterprise being introduced to a residential neighborhood. I'll leave it at that. Thank you. I need three minutes. That's all. First of all, I want to thank all of you. I want to thank the neighbors. Certainly, their passion is understandable. First, I would be mindful of the point that I made earlier of the ordinance. And I believe that it does expose this township to... And for that reason alone, there should be a clarification from the zoning board before you even vote on the variance, as to what its view is through council, not through the planner only, through council as to this issue. We've not heard from council on that. Secondly, I would note, and Mr. Pranty talked about hearsay. There was a ton of hearsay through all the residents, but well-meant and well-received and well-understood. But only one planner was heard from. And this board has a responsibility to balance the facts and the expert opinion. There were no experts produced by the objectors. There was a lot of passion. There was a lot of concern. There was a lot of... I respect that concern. But no expert testimony. So, on the record, the only expert testimony is what you heard from Mr. Scheidig and what you heard from our planner. And as a consequence of that, I don't believe anything else. The cross-examination was wonderful, but it is not expert opinion. Lawyers are not experts in this particular situation. Finally, I heard somebody say that there's criminals that are going to be using this facility. In reality, this is now legal in the state of New Jersey. That has to be understood. I was also heard that my client was called, or maybe the owner was called, an outsider. Last time I looked, the Constitution applied to everybody who's an American, regardless of where they live. With respect to being arbitrary and capricious, I would respectfully suggest that it would be arbitrary and capricious to deny this application in the face of one expert report and zero expert reports on the other side. I'm not going to go over it. The board heard all of it. I believe that Mr. Kyle did an exceptional job of laying out the positive and negative criteria. I want to thank the chair and the board and the staff for dealing with some of the technical issues that were presented by this application, and thank you for the opportunity to be heard.
Some of you have a little summary as well. A couple of things have been raised. As you're aware, it's a use variance. It requires five affirmative votes to be passed. You have two variances here. One is for the cannabis facility for cultivation and manufacturing. The other one is for the two uses on the one-lot thing, the home. It was discussed by several people, this ordinance and the possibility of the ordinance leaving some openings and not being clear. But at this point, what the zoning board has, I think Mr. Scheidig and I agree, at this point, you have a use that is not specifically permitted in this zone. So, a use variance would be required. You heard the arguments about whether it fits into the uses that are allowed in the zone? Is it agricultural? Is it in the same nature of agriculture? Or is it outside of that because of the security issues and some of the others? That's part of which we have to weigh. Mr. Kyle did properly set forth the standards. Whether you agree with them or not, it's up to you to decide whether they carried their burden of proof. He did properly recite the standards as far as the positive criteria, the advancing of purpose of zoning, the particular suitability of the site, and then the negative criteria, right, the impact on the zoning plan, zoning ordinance, and the surrounding neighborhood. So, the standards were set forth properly. It's your decision as to whether they carry their burden regarding them. The lack of an expert on the other side doesn't necessarily mean you have to accept Mr. Kyle, because on many occasions, you just have one expert, and you have the way the evidence presented. So, it doesn't automatically mean you have to accept that expert because the other one wasn't presented. So, you give the weight that you care to give to the evidence. Yes, there was hearsay. There were things that really were not relevant at all. Some of them were just based upon the passion of the neighbors. And it's your job to take the passion out of it, decide what's relevant and what is not, and hopefully express the reasons for your vote.
We heard the testimony? A lot of testimony. What are your thoughts? Need a motion?
By the way, other option is, if you feel you need more time. I don't want to say you have to vote tonight. If you're ready to vote, you're voting.
I'll take a motion. Chair Howard, based my decisions on, would I want this, you know, facility, whatever, if it may, actually? So, I'd make a motion to deny file ZB 23-01?
I should act as that motion.
Mr. Iglesias?
I have comments to make before I actually make my vote. You guys gave a fairly good presentation, but it's bad. There's one problem I have with you. You're experimenting with the business. You know, apparently, think you know something about, and you're obviously dumb. And I wouldn't want you guys to experiment this. That's my reason why I can say I would motion like here that you're...
Mr. Liam?
No.
I was just...
Yes, to the note.
Mr. Garofalo?
No. I deny it.
Okay.
The motion is to deny. So, if you're agreeing to deny, your vote is yes. If you want to grant your vote.
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. Hallow?
Yeah, someone who would deny, but also would like to say is, I'm not opposed to any cannabis facility in general. But I could most definitely be opposed to the cannabis facility in the residential area. I'm not opposed to some there. So, I think what you did was a really great job, actually. But I'm a lawyer. He said that there was bill of crushables on the side of all the residents. And once I did hear on the side of you guys, I did hear one resident saying, I would say, if this was a great idea, they wanted that. So, they carried the weight.
And Chairman Greifert?
I want to say that I am not against these facilities as well. But I just think this is probably the worst place possible that you could put all these homes around.
Any resolutions?
No. Thank you. Thank you.